Too much time here on the Capitol City Council.
Okay.
Do it again.
Yeah, let's do it again. It's fine.
Do it again.
I'm gonna review myself on the beginning.
Let's do it again, Linda, okay?
Because you're in the area.
And also the community program on the incentive. And then we'll use online too.
Because that's a, um...
I'll ask for a separate.
Okay.
For the consultant.
Okay, great.
Okay, everyone, please assemble. I'd like to call to order the Capitol City Council regular meeting this July the 25th. And city clerk, please repeat the roll call.
Yes, councilmember Story.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Botor.
Here.
Mayor Bertrand.
Thank you. And let's rise for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind that brief intro- interruption at the start of the meeting, take a picture to help second harvest in their food drive this year. So I'd like to read a brief announcement. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communication Channel Eight and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. and also on Charter Channel Seventy-One and Comcast Channel Twenty-Five. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website. And our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. And if you'd like to have your name recorded when you come up to speak, please sign the sheet at the podium. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to ask, is there a report on closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. City Council met at 8:30 to 4 o'clock this morning on the first item, the public employee appointment. Took a recess from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. and then discussed two closed session litigation items. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Any additional materials, city clerk?
Yes, we received six items for item Nine A, two of which were received today and there are copies at the dais. We also received one public comment and one additional material, which is actually the copy of the pertinent code which were distributed afterward for item Nine D. All of the additional materials are available for the public at the back and recent items are at the dais.
Thank you. Any deletions and additions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to open the public. Any comments that'd like to be made on items not on the agenda? Please come forward. Thank you.
I'm Cherie McCoy, Capitola homeowner and resident for twenty-five years. And I'm here to talk about safety. To address traffic issues on Forty-first Avenue, a study was conducted between 2001 and 2016 by Safe Streets L.A. The executive director of Safe Streets and an expert at automated red light enforcement, Jay Bieber, provided the analysis of the findings. He admits that the study is incomplete because it only focuses on rolling right turns. Data was first collected from 2001, 2005, and statistics show there was no collision incidents at the intersection of Forty-first Avenue and Capitolum Main Mall entrance. Yet the red light runner cameras were installed there in October 2005. Because the cameras seemed pointless, I inquired with the city of Capitolum as to why these cameras were placed in that location instead of where the traffic problems were up the street at the intersection of Forty-first and Claire's. The official told me that these lights were being tested, and once they would all dialed in, they would move them down to Forty-first and Claire's. Flash forward 2007, the red light runner cameras were installed at Forty-first and Claire's. They seemed to move a lot, and we wondered what was going on and why are they always focused on Claire's towards Burger King, Forty-first Right? I again communicated my concerns with the city, that the red light runner cameras need to be focused where the multitude of daily traffic law violations occur. And just think of how much revenue Capitolia could make by enforcing basic traffic laws. The lady on the phone thanked me for my input. Over a decade later, I was surprised to receive a phone call from someone saying they're with the Capitola Police Department, and they're following up on my inquiry about Claire's and Forty-first. I explained that there's a problem, and I told him, he told me that it's all because people come off Highway One when South is backed up and they cut through Claire's as a backway. And I said, there's a multitude of reasons that are going on, and that was about it. I went into a lot of detail of each one. A few months after that strange phone call, there was a woman killed, Cynthia Carey of Mount Herman, at that very intersection of Claire's and Forty-first. According to the news reports, she was stationary in the middle of the road when she was hit by a van and slammed into a bus. On a happier note, I'm also talking about the Capitola Mall overhaul. I think it's a great idea, but I think 630 living units with 1,100 new cars in this intersection is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody would like a copy of my detailed notes, I'd be happy to email them to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and you're well prepared. So any other people would like to speak? Seeing none, let's go back to city council for city council comments and staff comments.
I have nothing.
You have an announcement?
Yeah, I would...
I'm sorry.
You do? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you... I'm sorry. Kristin, please. And you're gonna have to wait.
I just wanted to bring two things up tonight. One is that I'd be interested in looking at the possibility of updating our water fountain at the, by the stand, the bandstand over there. The Santa Cruz Wharf recently put in the water fountain that where you can do, use water, use their bottles to refill there. So I'd be interested in looking at that. And then I currently sit on the children's network board and was asked to appoint an alternate. At this point, I'd like to go out, reach out to the community to see if anyone would be interested in sitting in as my alternate on that commission. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for making way.
Yeah. Sorry for skipping over councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
I just wanted to announce that tomorrow from 4:30 to 7:30, correct? Yes, from 4:30 to 7:30 tomorrow at Monterey Park will be the first Food Truck Friday event. I've been to some of these events in Scotts Valley, and they're lots of fun, and I'm excited to see one coming here for our first time. So I hope to see you all there, and I am looking forward to some, some good food and some good times in the park.
Sam?
No comments.
Okay. I have no comments. Okay, I have no comments. Onto boards, excuse me, city staff.
Just one brief bit of clarification on councilwoman Brooks's request for the water fountain. I believe my staff actually, I think great minds think alike. I believe my staff has already been working on that. Would, are you asking for a council hearing on this or is there something that we could, if we're already making progress, report off agenda?
I would appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great to hear.
Yeah.
Okay. Item 7, Board Commissions and Committee Reports. We have a few appointments, excuse me, historic museum appointment. Are we gonna have a presentation room in the city council, city clerk?
Just the announcement that, um, following recruitment, the museum board interviewed Dean Walker and has recommended that he be appointed to what is basically a three-year term, minus one month. So it is recommended that, by the board, that he join them.
Okay, that's an appointment action on our part. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the appointment to the museum board.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope, seeing that. It carries. And item B, youth appointment?
I believe you worked with this young man.
I did.
We have Bryce Ibrahimian, who has interested in serving as a youth member on two of our commissions, both the Finance Advisory Committee and the Commission on the Environment. These are one-year school-year terms and he is eligible for both positions. So the recommendation is the appointment of him as a youth member.
I see Bryce in the audience. Would he like to come forward? You do not want to come forward. Okay.
We had Bryce at our Finance Advisory Committee meeting last week and it was really exciting to have that, that new energy there. And as our finance director had mentioned to him during that meeting was a lot of the things that are being done now are going to be the future that, that his generation controls later. So it's really exciting to have that youth voice there. So I'm excited to, to have you join those boards, Bryce.
And I'd like to point out, it was Kristin, one of her first moves was to include the reach out to youth members. So thank you very much. And Bryce is a neighbor of mine and thank you for volunteering. So this is an actual item. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I just wanna add that or ask staff to make sure that these new commissioners participate in some sort of onboarding process. We have a new social media ordinance and I know that there's a booklet being updated. I just wanna make sure that, that, that takes place.
That's a great comment.
Hey Bryce, I just wanna encourage you to get some of your friends to get involved in public service too, okay? Thank you for your service.
I did notice our finance director had already taken him on his wing. So I think there is some interaction right there. So that's great.
Second still?
I need a second, yes. Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Carrie's, thank you very much. Let's move on to consent calendar. I understand there's, um, something you'd like to say, Sam?
Oh, yes, mayor, thank you. I just wanted to point out on item 7E on the consent calendar, I have a, um, a conflict and I will be recusing myself from that particular item. So you may wanna maybe take that as a separate vote.
Okay, let's take that as a separate item. Would someone like to make a motion on all items except for E?
Motion to adopt consent calendar excluding item E.
Second.
Yeah, just maybe as a point of order if you wanna, if any members of the public want to remove an item from the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any items in the public would like to speak on these items on the consent counter except for item E? Seeing none, back to city council for a vote. All those, you have a comment, sorry.
Yeah, I have a comment on item, uh, 8F, the Resolution for Approving Recreation Job Classifications. I'd be interested in, um, I, well, I just don't know. I, I would ask that we could include a more specific detail on the classification itself, on the age group that these folks will be working with. So if it would say from, I think it's generally just says middle school. But I think it would be best if we can add ages. I don't even know what middle... Yeah, or what is that? I don't even know what middle school age is, but...
We can, we could amend the job description to add the age range because it does say activities for middle school youth. So we can certainly add an age range to the job descriptions.
Okay, and then the second piece is, um, there, the law just passed regarding the minimum wage to $15 an hour and our after-school leader position starts at 1459. I would ask that we look at beginning that classification at $15 an hour. I don't know what the process would be for doing that at this time.
Interesting. So, so our entire hourly wage structure we review every year in January and we've been moving it up each year to keep in sync with the minimum wage increases. So that increase, as those increases phase in, those positions would be increased along with the whole hourly wage structure. Those increases have averaged, I believe, about 4% to 5% a year. So that would take place. We wouldn't be paying someone under the minimum wage. Alternatively, you could propose to amend the, the schedule as adopted this evening.
I would propose that we begin the salary at 15 effective immediately instead of waiting. I don't know if that's...
I think that that may need to be pulled if we're gonna take that. I don't know.
I'd be happy to know.
We need discussion of it.
So this is separate items. So in terms of, if that's recommendation or question?
Would you like me to pull the item?
Why don't we pull the item and we can discuss it later this evening?
Okay, so...
So I'll make a, would you like me to make the motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and G? And, and not F? And we pull that to discuss at a later time?
We should do it tonight. I think we need to get these job descriptions out so we can get the positions hired, but we can do it later this evening.
We already have a motion in second on the floor. Do we need to drop those before...
I could just amend it to delete F. So it'd be deleting E and F.
And I'll second that still.
Okay, so everything except for E and F, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so let's go on to item E. Sam, you're recused. You don't need to leave the dais, I believe. Is there a motion on item E?
Motion to adopt item E.
Second.
Okay, is there anyone from the city, uh, those attending right now would like to comment on item E? Seeing none, bring it back to city council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Count, it passes. So we'll do item F at the end of the meeting.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to 9A, Report on the Jewel Box Traffic Calming Project Results. And I see Steve at the dais. We'll now hear a report from Director Steve.
I have before you is a post-project report on the traffic calming, uh, measures we installed around the Jewel Box. A little bit of history here. Following, I think it's been over two years of hearings and public surveys and workshops, the council approved a set of traffic calming measures for the Jewel Box neighborhood. Based on results we'd gotten at a workshop that was held in June 2010, as a table which summarizes the traffic calming measures that were discussed at the workshop, the items highlighted in red there. The speed tables and turn restrictions both received significant participant support at this workshop. The speed tables got 90% support and the turn restrictions received 80%. So based on this kind of public input, the council did approve a project. That project scope included the construction of speed tables, two of them on Jade Street and one on 42nd Avenue, and the implementation of turn restrictions during commute hours on Topaz Street and 47th Avenue. The construction of the speed tables and the signs were installed in April 2019 and we did conduct traffic monitoring before and after the construction. A little bit more on the traffic monitoring. Pre-project monitoring was conducted on a single day, a single 24-hour period on Thursday, March 14th. This is one week before construction began on the speed tables. The data included speed and volume counts at 21 different locations throughout the greater Jewel Box area. The second set of data was collected on May 1st. It was approximately three weeks following the implementation of the traffic calming measures. We used the same blocks that we measured on the first time, during the first phase. 21 sites and two days of data, we ended up with quite a bit of 576 pages of data to analyze. So we kind of focused our analysis on the most likely impacted routes during the commute hours because that's really what we were targeting with these improvements. So here's a quick map of the area. The red dots on this map, so this is Jade Street, 45th Avenue, 42nd Avenue and Capitola Road. And then this is the formal Jewel Box neighborhood. The red dots indicate where the traffic monitoring was taken before and after. So like I said, we did our analysis looking at the, the 3 to 6 p.m. traffic and we also looked at only in the eastbound and northbound directions. Those are the primary traffic, heavy traffic that we get through the neighborhood at those times. So eastbound on, coming in off of Bromer onto Jade, eastbound on Capitola Road and northbound on 47th Avenue. So looking at the local traffic impacts, it's really involved with the turn restrictions that we placed at Topaz, where we restricted entrance onto Topaz, whether it was a left turn going straight off of right, off of Jade Street or coming out of the parking lot. And diverted that traffic, ended up diverting, as we could have predicted, to the next streets up on the Jewel Box. So as you can see here on the chart, Topaz Street, pre-project had a volume of 203 cars and post-project volume was 129. So they went down by 74 cars in the, in the monitoring. Opal Street, Jewel Street and Garnet also increases. I think a total 77 or 76. Very close in numbers to the amount of traffic that was diverted off of Topaz. Interesting Emerald actually went down by 19. That's the next street up before you get to Crystal, which is one-way. You know, that's just a traffic variation. I can't explain why they went down, but you know, we're looking at two snapshot periods here, so... But that's what the data provided. On the regional impacts, we, I'm looking at the impacts we encouraged at 47th Avenue, where we, where we restricted turning onto 47th from Portola Drive. That is a, you know, people coming, going west to east through the county will, will travel on Portola. It is a lot of cars turn up 47th to get to Soquel and Soquel Drive, Soquel, town of Soquel. The traffic indicates that we had 524 plus pre-project and 417. So we saw a reduction of 117, 107 cars. Where these cars went is a little harder for me to determine. A lot of them probably went up, got off earlier and went up 41st Avenue. Other ones may have continued on Portola Drive and gone into the Village. But because of the volumes, it's hard to tell where they went. Quick notice about enforcement. So the police department began enforcing soon after the construction was completed. During the first week, the officers issued warnings rather than citations and then began issuing citations. And as a policy, the traffic officers randomly select days that they do enforcement at various sites throughout the city to avoid any established pattern. So that's the extent of my report. I'd be happy to have any questions. The recommendations are to accept this report and provide any direction the council may have. I do have copies of the maps that are included if there's any specifics you want to talk about that. Thank you.
Any questions of Steve Jeszberg? Yes?
Quick question. If you can go back to that first slide when you were showing the pre, the numbers for the pre-impact and post-impact?
Just one?
Yeah. And actually, the only thing that's missing there is you didn't do a total and I'm just trying to eyeball it, but it looks to me like there's approximately about a 15% reduction. If you look at the volume before and the volume after. You did the volume on the next slide, but I was just trying to add up the numbers here and it just appears it's about 350 to 300, just from my quick calculation. So you had mentioned that on the other slide, there was a reduction. You just say you didn't know where they went, but it would indicate that there is some kind of reduction here. I'm looking at the volume of cars, pre, the volume before, the left column and the middle column.
Right.
It looks like left column's about 350 and this middle column's about 300, which means less cars. So even though you, it looks like it might be impact in other areas, there was some reduction. I just wanted to, you didn't have a number there, so I couldn't accumulate or re-total it. So just wanted to throw that in there. Thanks.
Oh, Sam?
No questions.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna open it to comments from the audience. And city clerk, would you talk about the card structure here?
Yes, we are using the colored cards. The first group is the green cards and they have one minute to speak. So anyone with a green card can start working their way up. They will be followed by the yellow cards, which are given a maximum of two minutes to speak. And finally, the orange cards get the full three minutes. And it is entirely your choice. Right in front of that little light, there's a box you can just drop your card in.
Okay, everyone with a green card, please come forward and welcome.
Good evening. My name's Neil Savage. I'm on Opal Street in the Jewel Box. So first, I want to thank the council and Steve and the staff for working over the last year and over the prior years. We've come a long way since the infamous option four. It's nice to see the lower speeds on the west end of Jade and it's nice to see the shift of eastbound during the peak hours off of Topaz. It's just a little disappointing that the sign that says no turning on, onto 47th. We only had a 20% reduction. If people followed the sign, we would have had 100% reduction. So again, thank you for all your work.
And thank you, Neil, for you and your wife for participating and getting the neighbors organized. Appreciate that. Any other questions, excuse me, people on green cards? Okay, moving on to yellow cards for two minutes. I see one person coming up. Thank you.
Took me two minutes to get here.
That's okay.
My name's Shelley Thomas and we live at 4870 Opal Street. We have noticed the increase in traffic, but what's scarier to us is the speed of that traffic. And we're right on the corner, well, two houses back from the corner of 49th and, and Opal. And depending on how fast the people take the current, the turn to head towards Capitola Road, it's very, very dangerous, especially with so many people that walk down to the beach because we've got the stairs a block away. And we've seen some near misses as well as trying to back out of your driveway at the same time that they're speeding through. So I don't know what the options are to look at, but I mean, speed reduction is a huge concern and a safety concern, of course, for any neighborhood. And so I hope you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others with yellow cards? Oh, I see someone. No. Oh, you're coming up. Okay, so seeing none on yellow, now we're on orange cards. Three minutes.
So my name's Alan Cable and I live in Topaz Street. And I want to reiterate thanks to Steve and the mayor and the council for, for putting these restrictions in place. I think it's made a great improvement to the speed on Jade. And when it's enforced, I think it's had quite a good effect on the overall traffic through the Jewel Box. And if we wind ourselves back four years to when we first started this, remember, the, the reason for doing this was to improve the safety in the Jewel Box. There was a lot of traffic, a lot of high-speed traffic on the residential streets. We wanted to get that traffic off the residential streets and onto the arterials and the collectors. So that was the objective. And I think the issue we have right now is simply one of enforcement. People are not complying with the, with the restrictions. I did an informal survey last Thursday. I just sat for an hour just watching the end of Topaz and the end of 47th. We had 90 cars in one hour turn up onto 47th from Portola. That's not from the other direction. I didn't even realize there was a restriction there. And we had about 40 cars come through Topaz. So we clearly have a restriction problem or a compliance problem with the, with the restrictions. So we have some suggestions for how we might improve this. First of all is the obvious one, which is let's improve enforcement. I, I know it's not a, a fun thing to do for the police to sit at the end of the street there, but if we don't enforce the restrictions, the people will not comply with them. And there's no reason to spend all that money if you're not going to enforce your restrictions. You know, we can, we can come up with some inventive things. We can use some ghost cars maybe, put some old crews... maybe, put some old cruisers there to maybe allow people to see that there is something going on. So that's number one. Secondly, let's make the signs more visible. Right now, they're nice little square white signs, great reading material, but I think if we added a red, a red no-entry sign there with the time restriction underneath, I think it would improve the compliance. I think people would take a look at that and be more interested in obeying those restrictions. The third thing we can do, I think, is to consider rolling the restrictions up on the east end of the Jewels on Forty-fifth, because, and that's what the last speaker was talking about, because all, a lot of the cars are just coming and popping up one street. So if we can roll it up to the rest of the Jewels, I think it would make a big difference, and achieve the goal of getting the cars onto the arterials or the collectors. So in summary, I think we've made a really good start, I think we really need to step up the restrictions, step up the enforcement, and I think if we do that, the Jewel Box will be a much safer place, the Village will be a safer place to live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a Jewel Box resident, and I live on Opal Street, and I've been coming to the city council meetings for this issue, and I also went to the community meeting. I think one thing that isn't in the report, is at the community meeting, we did go through and brainstorm ideas, but one thing that Topaz residents seem to agree with is, they didn't want to simply just push this problem off onto other streets. And when reviewing the report, if you look at the numbers, to answer your question, there's only an increase, or a decrease of 15 cars total, if you look at those numbers.
I just added up, it's 5 percent, not 15.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that goes to just show the minus 19, we don't know where those cars went, or if it was because of the no-turn signs. But if you look at the numbers also further in the report, on Opal Street, there, just the one block between Forty-fifth and Forty-seventh, there was a 224 percent increase, which is the 81. If you look at the further eastern block, which my neighbor was talking about, that's a 96 percent increase in traffic, and on Garnet, there was an 84 percent increase in traffic. I've seen enforcement for the no-turns, people are still turning down Topaz. So these numbers are showing people still going down the street. What happens through enforcement when people finally realize that they need to stop turning down that street? They start going down the other streets, and we end up in the situation that the Topaz residents said they didn't want to put on their neighbors, which was just simply push this problem off. So what I'm asking is, what are we going to do about the problem as a whole? Let's not think about what are we going to do just today, but let's be forward-thinking. No-turn signs seem to be a quick fix that's simply bumping it down the street, and fine, put a no-turn on Opal, put a no-turn down and down, but then it's just pushing it further down, and then there's no access to the neighborhood for anyone. So what I'm asking from the people who are educated in this area, what do we do to fix this problem? I don't know. This isn't my area. We're making steps in the right direction, but a 224 percent increase and 84 percent increase, I don't think those are the fixes for the long term. It seems like it's a fix right now for Topaz, but eventually, once people stop going down Topaz, they're going to start going down the other streets, and I've seen it myself, where people are just driving too fast, and I don't know how to fix the problem, but I think we need to think not just about today, but what's going to happen next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melinda Vento, I live on Topaz Street. Been here before, want to say first, thank you for really all the measures that the city has taken so far to help us, it's very much appreciated. I actually came to ask, and I know I won't get an answer tonight, but I'd love to understand how many citations were issued as enforcement for this, and the reason I say this is, we 've seen a decrease in the traffic on Topaz during the rush hour, but quite frankly, I still battle to get in my driveway, there's that many cars coming through when I pull in, going the wrong way. So I would love to understand, I do believe that enforcement, whatever measures we take, it needs to be enforced, or this, all this investment will, it won't do any good, right? So, and people follow other people. The gentleman that just spoke, I would completely agree with. I live on Topaz, I would, I would like to not see this traffic pushed to our neighbor's streets. I don't want to see them have the issues. We have a huge volume, even with the increase on these other streets, the volume is so high on our streets that unfortunately, you know, we do need some relief, but would love to see whatever solution is implemented, long-term, that is enforced. I just, I think we need help, and I have been told that some of the concern as well, it's the residents that live in the Jewel Box, it's my neighbors that would be getting the tickets, but I would say that most of my neighbors that live in the Jewel Box actually would love to see the traffic decrease, and most of them, I think, do actually obey the law. So anyway, I want to thank the city council and everybody that supported all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jim Hobbs, and my wife Jan and I live on Topaz Street between Forty-fifth and Forty-seventh, and we have, we walk our dogs a couple of times a day, we have a couple of old dogs, and so it's nice to, we have definitely noticed a decrease in the amount of traffic during, particularly during the evening commute, and we're very appreciative of the council's actions that got that implemented. So that, I just want to reaffirm what everyone is saying, is that we are very appreciative of that. That being said, the only thing that I've heard from other people is they say, well, I didn't really see the sign down there, which is a little mystifying to me, because it's not really a small sign, it's a large sign, but as Alan said, some people have not, they aren't very observant, I suppose, and so maybe a little color around it or something would make it more visible, so people would pay more attention to it. And of course, enforcement is the key to the whole thing of people complying with it anyway, so I just wanted to put that in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Linda Smith, I live on the other end of the Jewel Box, and I'm not going to take three minutes, but I didn't want to be repeating a bunch, since I am far away from the problem. The last time I spoke on this subject, we were looking at potentially barricading off Jewel Box, and because there are so many of us that live on the other side of Forty-ninth Avenue, the barricades would have cut us off from accessing Forty-first, or put us on to Cliff, and then back up the hill, or Capitola Road, which is already extremely congested. I think what you've done is a good step in the right direction. I'm one of the people, I was out of town when the signs all got implemented, and when I came back, I couldn't remember where they had been put, so I went looking for them. The white sign is sort of hard to see. The enforcement that we did, I've heard that enough people got tickets that it got people's attention, and I know a lot of my neighbors that live over on Prospect Avenue and on that other side of the Jewel Box, we don't drive down Topaz anymore because of our awareness of the issue. I personally pick different streets to drive down, but when I'm going to Jade and Forty-first, which right now, my husband's having physical therapy there, barricading off would make it really difficult for us to do our normal, you know, routine stuff. So the speed tables are excellent, I think they're a lot better than the speed bumps, because it's been my observation that people actually do slow down, and they don't just hop over them, and the red sign idea, I think, is a great idea.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, my name's Cherry McDonald, we live on the corner of Jewel and Forty-seventh. I want to tell you, we've lived there for over 22 years, and we've seen a marked increase in traffic. And it's, even with this study, there's been hours where it didn't change at all. We've done informal studies, and a friend who lives on Opal has done informal studies, and we've found that there's been very little change, especially on the weekends, even though the signs are basically for what I would call rush hour traffic, the weekend traffic coming up out of the Village, turning on Forty-seventh, roaring through, most of them, I want to say, are at the end of a day of partying, and they're screeching their tires, and the motorcycles are so loud, and it's just, it's impossible. I need some of you to come and spend an evening on our deck, listening to the traffic from five to nine, and you'll have an idea of what we put up with. We honestly can't even listen to the television with the doors open. We have to lock the house up on that side where the street is, in order to enjoy an evening at home, and that's really pathetic. It's not the number of cars as much as the attitude of the drivers. So I want to thank you for what you're doing, and I really appreciate Steve and all the people, we've attended all these meetings, we've been in all of the, you know, studies and things. I just don't think we're addressing it boldly enough, we need to do more. So maybe they enforce it during the week, not on weekends, I don't know, but if you live on Forty-seventh, that's a very narrow street, 40 feet wide, and people are going over 60 miles an hour sometimes. You can take my grandson's little laser gun that they use for baseball, and you can check how fast the cars are going, and it's appalling. It's a 25 mile an hour zone, according to the signs, and it's, that's not at all what happens. In fact, we put locks on the gates, we don't let our grandkids out the doors, they have to stay on the deck to play, not even ride their scooters or anything, unless we take them down someplace to ride them. So I think we need to reconsider what we're doing. What we're doing is a step in the right direction, and it is appreciated, but I don't want to leave the misconception that we're finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dave Aaron, I live at 4980 Garnet Street, and wanted to thank the council and the department for their sort of thoughtful solutions to sort of a joint set of problems that me and the neighborhood have. I just wanted to make a couple of observations, and one sort of request, the first of which is, the capture data before and after shows everywhere in the Jewel Box, except on the east side of Forty-ninth. You know, we two are in the neighborhood, and we'd like to see if these changes affected us positively or negatively. I know that every time that we want to go to our homes from, sort of, well, every time we try to get to our homes from...
Forty, fourteenth?
Forty-seventh?
Forty-seventh.
There's a no-left turn sign, so we get to drive through the Village, which between three and six is not always enjoyable, so we feel like we're being affected by, decisions are made without any benefit ourselves, or at least understanding what those benefits might be. Secondly, I was a little confused as to the, the way the signage got implemented, originally said that there was no left turn in a number of places, but no Monday-through-Friday designation. There's a no-left turn sign, eastbound Cliff, that was approved by the city council, now there's a sign that also prevents westbound turns on Cliff down to Forty-seventh, that's a street that we take regularly, and again, we sort of end up in the, in the stew down there in the Village, and we didn't quite understand why that second sign got put in. You know, my, my proposal, or my idea, was that sort of the no-left turn on eastbound Forty-seventh, onto Forty-seventh makes sense, because that's where many sort of interlopers are going as they're trying to cut through and get to the Village the fastest, but people who live in the neighborhood would have benefit by knowing they could go down Opal Cliffs, turn left onto Cliff, and then right onto Forty-seventh to get to their homes. So it wouldn't necessarily be sort of the interloper type who's just coming trying to get to the Village fast, people who actually live in the neighborhood would get the benefit of a second route in, that might not be as well-known to people, yet it would provide easier access to the people who actually live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Ron.
My name is Ron Burke, I've been working on this issue for about 20 years, since establishing this P'TOMS back with a committee of seven back in 1999. Definitely, the traffic has gotten worse, and it's not just the counts, it's the behavior of the drivers, being the fact that Jewel Box neighborhood is used as a cut-through. In fact, my wife and I were at dinner last Friday night, and we had a couple right behind us, and they, "Where are you from? What Jewel Box?" "Oh, we drive through there all the time." And that's typically what we encounter, in fact, even my sister-in-law said that just a few days ago, she said, "Oh, we just wanted to pass through." It's very typical. It is a problem, it's getting worse. I want to definitely thank Steve, and thank you who are involved, for what you've done. You've taken some strides to get us in the right direction, it's very much appreciated. There are a couple of things I want to say as far as the actual improvements. The speed tables on Jade Street, they've been wonderfully effective, I believe, talking to the neighbors in Trade Windows, Ballpark. It used to be in the old days, about 20 years ago, that there were, there was a crosswalk there, so people can get across and eventually make it all the way over to, I think it was, it was Albertson's, or Rouse, if you remember, it's Whole Foods now, and that gets them that direction safely, those who've been around long enough, you remember these things. So that's been very helpful. One of the things about the speed tables is unlike the humps, you, it forces you to slow down. Some drivers who drive over the humps, we've experienced for the last X years, Forty-seventh, Forty-fifth, Forty-ninth, if you go to a certain speed, you have enough ground clearance, you can just go over those humps really fast. There are outliers, we have a few, but that creates the biggest danger, pulling out of your driveway in a narrow street, what have you. So one recommendation I would make for Forty-seventh, Forty-fifth, Forty-ninth, the center speed hump of the three between Topaz and Capitola Road, replace the hump with a table. That's number one. It's a moderate cost, I know they cost a lot more than they did, and we had these put in 20 years ago, but it's a consideration. The reason why is because Portola to Capitola Road on Forty-seventh is a little over quarter-mile, it is a drag strip. In the old days, if you've been around long enough, you probably remember, even with stop signs at Topaz, people used to fly right through there, and they would gun it. They don't do it as often, but they still do, that will help stop the speed in the middle, basically. And the one thing, as mentioned before, I definitely want to ring with, is the fact that enforcement is a big deal. Speed tables, speed humps, what have you, there's self-enforcing, they're always there, they don't go away. Stop signs, or no-left turn signs, or no-right turn signs are there for a good reason, but they're willing, they're, people have to willing to make a decision, will I violate the law or not? We're finding a lot of people just run right through. I could show you pictures on my phone recently, of cars coming through in a line, eight, 10 cars in a row, at four or five p.m., weekdays, they just don't care. What is really funny kind of is, I have an office that's over Forty-seventh, and I see them go by, people are looking back and forth, sometimes they're close together, the psychology I figure is, if one person goes, you could get caught. If eight, 10 people go, it's only one that's going to get caught, let's all go together. It's kind of a funny philosophy, but it's the way it works. So that was another suggestion, or something else I was thinking about offhand, I forgot. But yeah, it's been very effective as a near-term solution, so thank you for your consideration. We hope for the best.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne Kissling, I live just outside the Jewel Box, and since there's, I wasn't even going to speak tonight, but there's so many people from within the Jewel Box, and I, and I, this whole issue has actually made me more aware of the issue, and I've tried to be more considerate. I did used to use Topaz all the time to get home, because it's my obvious route, but I have changed my patterns. I would like to say that while, you know, it's put me at some inconvenience, I'm okay with the changes that, that have been implemented, and I'm trying to be sympathetic to the suffering of the Jewel Box people, but we live in a beach town, and this is, you know, we all live on streets, we, even outside the Jewel Box, it's hard to get out of your driveway, there's drunk people going by at night. You know, I had to keep my kids inside of fences their whole lives, growing up, I don't think it impaired them at all, they're great kids. So I guess my point is just that, what I didn't see in the data is the impact to, around the Jewel Box, because I've noticed a lot more traffic on my street, I've noticed a lot more traffic going down Portola into the Village, and in that, I don't like that from an environmental standpoint, let alone the fact that it's inconvenienced other people. So, you know, we keep saying, I keep hearing that, you know, we've got to fix the Jewel Box, but it's like, you're just going to, you're going to move the problem down the road. So I think load balancing from within these streets, and this is a fairly limited data set as well, but load balancing within the streets, I agree with Linda, is a good answer, and, you know, we all have to kind of, I feel like, you know, my street's definitely taken up a lot of the slack, and, you know, but to go further and just say, we live on a certain type of street, and other people live on a different type of street, and they have to take the problem, that, I don't like that. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a countervailing point of view. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. With that, are there any others that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to city council for comments and direction. And by the way, thank you for everyone who participated and came up to speak, we appreciate your comments.
Where do you want to start?
I think that, Sam or Kristen?
Start, John.
I'm happy to start.
Sam?
I'm happy to start.
Sam?
Yeah. First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out and, you know, giving us your perspective, your experiences about the changes that were made by the council there. And I think it's important to follow up on the things that we do and to really try to evaluate them. I know this is not a perfect data set, but it is a reasonable attempt to see the impacts of the measures that we implemented. Now, with, and with that said, I, my overall view is that this has been certainly effective on reducing the amount of traffic on Topaz, and I think that's a good thing. I think that as much awareness as we can create among one another about our driving habits and how they may impact the neighborhoods and the residents will, to some extent, help alleviate this problem. And so I want to, I view this as a place where we've started, but we need to keep working at it. We need to keep and the discussions with the residents and try to implement other corrective measures. I'm concerned about how we've shifted some of this to Opel, and are there things that we can do to help alleviate that impact that we've created there? I did want to, also want to address the one question that came up about the overall, how do you globally resolve this issue? And unfortunately, Capitola and the city council here does not have the authority and power to globally resolve this issue. We can't block off the streets. We can't build a wall around the city. And that is under the purview of the Regional Transportation Commission. I think we all know the reason that people cut through Capitola, because Highway One is blocked up. That's the global solution. And that's what, we need to continue to work with our regional transportation electives and have them focused upon Highway One. And I think that that would do a great deal toward alleviating some of the issues that we experience. I do specifically about some corrective measures, the recommendations. I agree that the signage needs to be better done, more impactful, more visible. And then after that's done, or even, not even waiting for that, but of course, enforcement. I think that we should have our police department focus on enforcement so that people become, let's say, trained about what the consequences of their actions are going to be. And I think that people will stop, will tend to stop doing that. Because I am a little disappointed about how the numbers on Forty-seventh really didn't go down as much as we had hoped. And I think that ultimately, at this point, that is going to take better enforcement. And I also heard, and I think those are good suggestions, about maybe replicating some of those turn restrictions. But I would want to be cautious and make sure that we're communicating with all the neighbors there, because it does have an impact on you. If we put up turn restrictions, then you're going to have to be driving around just to get home. So we should keep those in mind, but we should do that in good communication with the residents about other measures that we may be able to implement. And, and then, you know, and overall, I mean, because jewel box is not the only neighborhood in Capitola, and I think the council needs to be mindful of people who live on Capitola Road, who live on Forty-fifth Avenue, who live on Wharf Road, and doing what we can to try to mitigate some of the impacts when we do some of these restrictions, because it just, sometimes it's just going to push the problem someplace else. So I think those are my thoughts. Let's, let's do better signage. Let's follow up with good enforcement. And let's continue the dialogue about what are some other measures that the residents there think would be appropriate to alleviate the increased traffic. And particularly, I do want to focus upon Opel Street and seeing what we can do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and for everyone who's participated for years in addressing this issue and looking for solutions. I am glad to see that overall, there is a decrease in cars in the jewel box, and that there's a decrease in cars on Topaz. It is disheartening to see the increase on Opel Street. I remember when we discussed this previously, we had this conversation about we didn't want to move all the traffic on to another street. We also had the conversation about how there would not be a way to do this for any street without it somehow being divided up amongst the other streets. So I think it was to be expected to a certain degree, but it is disheartening to see nonetheless. As Sam said, and I will echo, unfortunately, there's just, there is no way to equalize cars on every street, to make sure there's the same number of cars, or to ensure that cars aren't coming into the jewel box. I think there's a lot we can do, as already mentioned, through enforcement, potentially taking a bigger look at the signs. I know that we had a budget for this whole project of eighty-two thousand, or eighty thousand, and we've expended seventy-two of it already, so we are limited at this point at what more we can do, at least at this time in this fiscal year. The, the comments about the attitudes of the drivers, I a hundred percent sympathize with. In recent years, Capitola has become more and more popular as a tourist destination, because we live in a beautiful place and people want to be here. And we can't blame them for that, because we all live here because it's a beautiful place. But I live on Cherry Street, right behind Capitol Avenue here in the village, and I have also seen people going sixty miles an hour down what is essentially a one-lane street. It's a two-way, but it's a one-lane street, going sixty miles an hour, screaming at each other. When I work in the shop in the village, I hear people screaming at each other for parking. I've seen people screaming at our police officers for receiving police citations, and it's incredibly disheartening. It's incredibly frustrating. And quite honest, it's appalling behavior, not only as a neighbor or a visitor, but just as a decent human being. And so I sympathize, and I hear you, and I wish that there was something we could do about that, but I'm not sure that there's anything we can do to change the attitudes of individuals. But if there was, I'd be happy to look at that, because it certainly is, it is frustrating. Overall, I think that the staff report, you know, asks for us to consider, you know, giving direction, taking no further action, declaring the project complete, modifying existing traffic control devices, or three other actions. I think from what we've heard, the existing traffic control devices are effective, with the exception perhaps of a sign needing to be bigger or more visible. And so I would definitely support maintaining the modifications we've already created, and just continuing a conversation overall, continuing contact with your council members, contact between council members and staff, between council members and/or staff and the community. Because as I mentioned, our budget is low on this. We have seen some effectiveness, but again, that doesn't mean that this is the end-all-be-all of traffic solutions in the jewel box or anywhere. So for now, and of course, there may be other changes or modifications as the comments continue, but for now, I would like to make a motion that we maintain the existing traffic control devices. And that's all I'll put on my motion right now, that we maintain the existing traffic control devices.
Friendly amendment to that? And possibly come back and do some numbers a year from now and evaluate how we're progressing?
That sounds great. Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and second.
And I just had a follow-up question. When staff is ready.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. My question is, has, so has Waze or MapQuest companies been updated regarding these new limitations? Is there a way?
So we have, we have emailed with Google Maps, who runs Waze and the Google Map app. I believe their response was, "Thank you for the information."
You didn't get a hold of them.
They're rather difficult and non-communicative. So we have reached out to them. I can't tell you how effective it's been. I checked once or twice, and I didn't get routed through there, but they haven't confirmed that they have implemented those changes on the program.
And MapQuest, is that a different forum? Is that through, I still use MapQuest. I'm just going to be honest.
We do not reach out to MapQuest. We can do that.
Okay, all right, everyone relax.
We focused on Google and Waze.
I'm fully embarrassed now. Thank you. I would just add, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I understand that there was a lot of work that was done before I arrived up here. And so I agree that there needs to just be more regular enforcement. I too have thought about whether I should go down the street when it said not, and agree that there should be better signage, because I was surprised when I came across it myself. And, and I, yeah, that's all I had. And well, and that, again, I would just echo what Councilman Storey, Councilmember Story was saying, is that this is a regional issue, and it is really hard to alleviate traffic, not just in one area, but I too live in a heavily impacted area. So that if this were to come forward in another neighborhood, that we be neutral and thoughtful, and just as strategic as we were in this particular process with other neighbors in our, in our community.
Great. I don't have much left. I think Councilmember Story and Peterson covered all the highlights of what's been done. I think I want to acknowledge the fact that the speed tables are working. They're slowing people down, and they are a deterrent of some sort. I think we tried to convey to everybody that there was no miracle solution, and there's really not a lot left in our bag of tricks here. I'm not sure about the color of the signs. I don't know if we're restricted. I know there has something to do with stop signs, and yellow and red, and Steve shaking his head. So the sign's white, and that's it for a reason. I have seen in some cities that are trying something new with no right turn on red signs. It's an illuminated light that will flash, you know, and light up at certain times, and it could be on a timer where it lights up from three to six. So there might be an improved sign that's available, that might be a light. I know that the lights that we have in front of the police station, that was a stop sign that we had significant Hollywood stops or blow-throughs, and by adding the red flashing lights around it, I think, I want to believe that it's reduced it somewhat. I have a stop sign in front of the house where I live, and I would say that one out of ten cars may stop at that stop sign. So it's an attitude. It's a, it's a convenience, it's a comfortableness that we all become familiar with in our neighborhoods, where we just, you know, blow through signs. I'm not really advocating, you know, the enforcement's a tough issue, because when I put a police officer there writing a ticket or trying to stop traffic, I feel like I'm taking away from something that might be a bigger priority. I know that we have the availability of ghost cars, and maybe we could use something like that to have a car with nobody in it. And I've sat in that conga line on Portola trying to get back into town, and it's pretty much, people obey it, until one person breaks the sign and goes, and then all of a sudden, everybody believes, well, if he can go, I can go. So I mean, this is more about human nature, attitudes, things like that. And everybody's shaking their head because we know it. But I think it's what was said here, you know, that's why I put the, agreed with the motion, is, is that I think we've done some good. I think that you yourself should be commended as neighbors for realizing the burden and trying to use different streets. It was nobody's intention to move traffic from one street to another. It's kind of a byproduct. So I think we just need to keep this on the radar. It's why I added the inclusion to monitor this a year from now, do some numbers. I'm encouraged by the fact that there's even a little bit of reduction, because what we need to do is frustrate people to the point that they look for another way to go. So that's my comment.
So I have a few comments. First of all, I really appreciate, like I said earlier, people coming out and participating in this. Someone said it's been a number of years, so it's quite a bit of time to work on something with city staff. And we're definitely, city council is supportive of your involvement. I also like the comments where some people say they've actually changed their habits in terms of driving in and out of the jewel box, and even someone from outside the area said that. And they also appreciate the fact that this is a global problem, as Sam mentioned. Now, I have a question for the police chief, if you would come forward. And then I have another question for you, Steve, after the police chief gives us a little testimony here. Just while he's coming forward, traffic has gotten so bad on my street that when I back out of the driveway, I get honks. And it's like, you know, I think that you probably have the same experience, you know? It's like you can't even back out of your driveway now. And I can feel you're taking your life in your hands, and, you know, I can't see three-sixty degrees behind me. So my question is, chief, and I know your guys are spread all around the city, just like Ed mentioned, have you seen any decrease, you know, coming by in random times, any decrease in citations, or is it still pretty constant? I'm trying to get an idea of your, the response.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Mayor Bertrand, council members. The numbers that Steve put together are pretty reflective of that. And I'm glad we're talking about driving behavior, because that's what we need to change.
Right.
Driving behavior, regardless of the signage, has not changed to the extent that we would like it to, as a police department or a community and city. But to answer your question, as an example, the month of April, we had forty-five written citations for violations. Technically, it's a violation of signs. That's the vehicle code section. We had a good number of traffic stops that resulted in a warning. As I've spoken about in the past at council and other meetings, I like to allow my officers to have the discretion to decide if a ticket is the best means of changing this driver's behavior, or if a warning is appropriate. And so we're doing both of them. Just as a comment, and it's been mentioned by the speakers and by council in discussion this evening, enforcement is one piece of the puzzle here. Enforcement alone is not going to change the driving behavior. People are willing to run the risk of being stopped by a police officer and receiving a citation if they can get home ten minutes before the car in front of them. And that's what we're dealing with. And so the conversation about signage is an opportunity. We will continue to do enforcement as we are able to, given the competing priorities in the city, and we'll continue to try and change driving behavior. I think we have an opportunity for a little bit more outreach, and I would like to ask the public to do some of that outreach on our behalf. I don't want to put ourselves, myself or my officers, in a position where we're making threats, that we're going to have a zero-tolerance policy here in the city. I'm not in favor of that as a police chief. But the outreach, I think, would have a positive effect to try and continually reduce these numbers. And I hope that answers your question.
It does. And I hope that your enforcement and activities help. And also, I really appreciate you asking the public to be part of that outreach, because in fact, when the public starts talking about something, I think it has a fairly effective.
I agree.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve, so I know we're doing a lot of roadwork in the jewel box right now. Yeah, a lot of digging, a lot of people notice this.
County of Santa Cruz is doing a lot of roadwork.
Yes, right. It's the collective we in this case. Now, you told me something very interesting. Steve, I really think it was a great idea of yours to let all this work happen and then actually do some surfacing of the roads afterwards. Is that correct?
So yeah, the county will be slurry sealing the roads they're working on, and we're trying to work with them to do, make sure all the streets in the jewel box get slurry sealed at the end of the sewer project, which will be next year, just so people know, it's not going to happen this year.
It won't happen this year. So I'm glad that you're coordinating with the county on this. I think that's great foresight. So the mayor of Jewel Box, excuse me, Ron Burke, said that maybe another speed table might work, or, so as we do this review that Ed changed the motion on, and it was accepted, so maybe we could take advantage of some of the suggestions, and as we get a better idea of how traffic has changed, we could dovetail that into your project, because I know you don't want to be having people launch just for one or two zee things. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, as we come through and do another analysis, we can include that and look at the data again, and try and see what we can add.
Great. Thank you very much. So I think what Steve is letting us know, and Ed's motion sort of recognizes that, it takes a while for us to figure out what the actual effect of any kind of change is. The public slowly changes their habits. The people who live in the jewel box change their habits much faster, but the ones that come through here that are actually the cause of the problem, it takes them a while to change their habits. So in a year's time, we'll be coming back to this. In a year's time, this dovetails with Steve's foresight in trying to work with the county and doing a slurry seal, that maybe we could have some extra additions to, like speed tables or something like that, to help even improve the effect of our actions. So that's the end of my comments.
We have a motion. We have a second. Sam, you have some more comments.
Before we have the vote, I wanted to ask for clarification on the motion. The motion was to maintain the current restrictions, and that's at the exclusion of any other considerations, changes, additional signage, additional enforcement. considerations, changes, additional signage, additional enforcement, or additional outreach. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
In one sense, you do, but I heard the chief coming up that this is an ongoing thing in terms of enforcement, and he also mentioned that he was appealing to the public, to neighbors, talking to neighbors and such like that. And I think that's going to be continuing, and it will take a while for its full impact to be felt.
So, I'm still a little unclear about the intent of the motion. I didn't hear emphasize enforcement. I didn't hear, what I understand is that it's going to be status quo for another year, and then we're going to evaluate it again.
Would Kristin like to address maybe increased enforcement or continue enforcement?
Yeah. As for outreach, I think that that is something that the chief did address, and I also asked that the community continue to be in touch with us and with staff, and if necessary, with our police as well. So, that kind of outreach, I think, should continue. As for enforcement, I did hear the chief say that that's ongoing. I'm not sure if that's something we can discuss. I mean, the agenda staff report did indicate that there was warnings for a while and citations for a while. Can we get an indication, is there still patrol in that area? Is there still enforcement, or was that kind of just at the beginning to make sure it was happening, and now we're kind of back to business as usual?
Thank you for the question. Additional questions, Mayor Bertrand, council members? To answer the question about ongoing, is there still ongoing enforcement? Yes, there is. Every day in this neighborhood and many neighborhoods throughout the city, as there needs to be. I want to guard against a motion or discussion related to a potential amendment to this emotion, that might, a motion that might suggest to the public that we have some form of a quota that is expected as a means of managing this problem, because that wouldn't be proper. One of the things that is discussed, ghost cars, and I've spoken on this topic more than a few times over the last couple of years, they have an effect, sometimes a positive effect. They don't have the significant effect of deterring traffic violations that most might assume that they do. You might be surprised to learn that this afternoon, in preparation for this meeting, we put a ghost car out there at 47th and Portola, visible to everybody in a one-hour period, right around 80-plus vehicles made that violation anyway. And so, that's an indication of the effect of ghost cars. Issuing traffic citations, high-visibility patrol, high-visibility traffic stops when it's appropriate, and the necessary enforcement by way of a citation or a warning will continue to have a positive effect in reducing the numbers. But I want to make it clear, enforcement alone is not going to fix this problem. It's just not going to do it.
Thank you. So, I guess my motion is, continues to maintain the traffic measures that we, I don't remember what my phrasing was, the traffic calming measures that are already in place, to follow up in a year. I guess if you would prefer, Sam, I could say to encourage our officers to continue enforcement, because I think that from discussion and from what we've heard, that there's not really much more enforcement that could be done, unless you have a suggested amendment to the motion.
No, I don't think it's necessary to tell our chief and our officers, because they are going to do their job to the best of their abilities. And enforcement is only one of the three components. I'm more focused to looking at engineering and education, and it seems like that there's maybe a little bit more we could do now to improve the situation for, and again, I want to focus on the people who live on Opel. And it seems like that we could do that, signage is not an expensive item, and drawing people's attention to it. It would maybe improve the enforcement efforts that we're currently doing. But I also think that, as the chief mentioned about outreach, that's the education component. There may be things that we could do on our scrolls and our newsletters to draw attention, so that more people will become aware. We may find that a lot of people who are driving through the Jewel Box are Capitola residents. I imagine the vast majority may be. And if they become aware, they may, you know, rethink that. I know I have. So, that's all, I'm suggesting maybe doing a little bit more proactive, instead of just, you know, saying, "Oh, we did what we did. Let's sit back and just study it again in a year." That's a long time. A lot of these folks, you know, they have to live with that situation, and it gets to be, I think, a little bit, I think, more difficult if you live in that environment, instead of us, maybe just on the outside looking in. So, I think that that's what, I mean, what I would like to propose, and if it's accepted as a friendly amendment, but I think as the way the motion is stated, I don't think I could support it. I would like to maybe see a little bit more effort for the city to make, and I don't think that they need to be expensive or very, you know, hard enforcement efforts to solve this issue. And so, that's my position. Thank you.
Ed?
I think part of what Kristin's motion said, as I heard it, was she asked about the budget, and there was $8,000 remaining in the budget, and I think we made some suggestions to the Public Works Director about increased signage. So, I see that as part of this, and I think for the public, made comments about the signs could be more visible. So, I'm seeing that as something that was included in this motion. We're at least going to look into that and see if there is, you know, a better mousetrap that can work out there. I'm still, as the chief said, I'm reluctant to give direction or make specific recommendations regarding enforcement. I think that I have complete confidence in the police department and what they, where they choose to post traffic regulations, restrictions. So, I'm still comfortable with the motion, as I was allowed to, a friendly amendment. So, that's my position.
Yeah. Can I just seek some clarity? Can I have a readback of what the motion is, please?
It is maintain the current traffic calming efforts and return to study the traffic in one year.
And just to be clear, do we need to state that within this year, within this budget, we will do something about the signs, if there's enough money to do so? And one of the folks who presented regarding an additional center street bump?
Speed table.
Speed table. You know, if, in the budget, if the budget allows, could we, you know? So, those are the two things that I just want to make sure that we touch on, in addition to what Councilman Story is saying, is that we need to do continuous community outreach on this. I don't know what that means necessarily, but that something needs to be done. So, maybe we can get some feedback from staff on what that could potentially look like, as well as, is it necessary to include in our motion those things I mentioned?
Okay. First, Kristin, and Steve, I think you have a comment.
If it would kind of clear things up here, I would be willing to amend my motion to say, maintain the current traffic measures, follow up in one year, and direct staff to include notice of these changes in the Jewel Box in our next Capitola Currents newsletter, and to direct staff to look at the potential for a bigger sign and changing that one speed bump to a speed hump, just to provide that information to us, but not necessarily to take any action on it until approved by council. Would that, would that, does that work?
I like it.
Yeah? Does that work? Ed, would you still second that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can I comment on just, on the sign issue? There are state standards that allow enforcement to occur, so we have to make sure that we stay within those state standards, otherwise somebody could challenge a ticket and not properly sign. So, I will work with the police department and make sure the new signage goes in.
There's something to look into. If there's no answer, then we at least explored it.
Clearly, don't bring us options we can't use.
Just to be clear, are we asking for council to approve the signs, or are you asking for us to evaluate opportunities to clarify them and implement?
I think Vice Mayor Peterson adjusted her motion the way I...
Yeah, to ask you to get information on it and bring it back to us. And then, you know, I imagine at that point, we'll have to look at the budget and decide if we're going to consider it after the year, or if we have the money to do it then. But for tonight, the action is to maintain the measures, follow up in one year, put the changes in our Capitola Currents newsletter, and direct staff to look into the options for the signs and the speed bump to speed hump alteration, for information purposes.
Okay. And that's been motioned and seconded by Ed. And are there any more comments on city council? Okay, seeing none, call for a roadcall vote on this, please.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Botworf?
Aye.
Mayor Baugh.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item B, resolution for the levy of Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessments for Fiscal Year 2019 and 2020. Thank you for everyone coming. I really appreciate your response. Thank you. Yes, I'll wait till the mayor of Jewel Box leaves, and...
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
While this transition is happening, I want to announce that I have a conflict on this item. I am a member of the BIA.
Okay.
And it does impact my personal finances, and so, that does create a situation where I should recuse myself. So, I will step out for this item. Thank you.
Note, city clerk, that Sam Story is recusing himself. And Karn, you've been waiting a long time, so this is, I think, something you're going to speak to. Good. Okay. Okay, you're here. Okay, I'd like to request a report from Director Malbert, our city finance director.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, and city council. So, as you mentioned, this is the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area, or BIA Assessments for Fiscal Year 1920. By way of background, in 2005, the city council adopted an ordinance that established the BIA. And the BIA is a business-based, self-imposed assessment district, meaning that they impose the assessments upon themselves, and the revenue received from those assessments is then used for improvements and activities that support those businesses. Assessment amounts are determined by the business classification and number of full-time equivalent employees at each location, and each business may make in-lu payments in the form of gift certificates that the BIA can use in promotional activities, and the amount of in-lu payments are fixed per business category, per business in each category. As far as this process, on June 13th, the council set a public hearing originally for June 27th. There was an error in the public notice that went out for that, so we continued that public hearing to this evening. This evening's public hearing, the notice was published in the Sentinel and delivered to affected business owners. The state law, as well as our muni code, require that the council conduct a public hearing each year prior to approving the assessments, and those assessments are derived from the annual plan and the budget that's submitted by the BIA. And as a reminder, there's no fiscal impact to the city. The work that city staff does for the BIA is reimbursed, and I have those amounts up there, 3,000 for Public Works and 4,200 for Finance. This year, the BIA, as always, includes assessment revenues, but this year it also includes restricted TOT revenues, or transit occupancy tax, as a result of Measure J that was approved by voters in 2018. In February of this year, the council directed that the TOT revenues restricted for local businesses would be split evenly between the BIA and the Capitola SoCal Chamber of Commerce. So, you will see in this year's BIA budget, a 29,000 of restricted TOT revenue, which is the first time that will show up. A couple of change, or a change to the assessments for this year proposed by the BIA is to convert the two food service categories on the left, Restaurant Bar and Takeout and Restaurant Limited, into the four categories on the right, which are Restaurant with a full bar, Restaurant that serves beer and wine, Restaurants with No Alcohol, and Wine Tasting and Sales. The reason for these changes is this better reflects the businesses that are currently operating in the BIA, as opposed to what was there 14 years ago. Impact of those changes would reduce the assessments to these four businesses up there in total by 300. I would like to point out that what I'm showing up there for the Capitola Wine Bar and Merchants is what was assessed. They've negotiated, last year, I believe the last two years, they've negotiated that assessment down to the Restaurant Limited category. So, we had received additional materials at the previous public hearing, the original public hearing that was scheduled, from the owners of the Capitola Wine Bar, expressing their opposition to an increased assessment. So, I wanted to explain why I'm showing a decrease and why they're talking about an increase. Those changes will also increase the assessments for the 16 businesses listed up there. And again, that's really just kind of realigning the businesses as they've changed and grown over time, to get them into the right categories. Most of the changes are fairly small. There's a couple that are up there, but it's mostly due to the growth in those individual businesses. And I would also like to point out, we hear a lot about businesses that close in the village, but we did have, I think we had 20 last year, but we did have 14 new businesses open during fiscal year 1819. So, I just wanted to at least take a moment and list those up there. So, folks that weren't aware that they're open now in the village can go check them out. And that, oh, sorry. So, recommended action is to conduct the public hearing and adopt the proposed resolution levying the fiscal year 2019, 20 Capitola Village, Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessments, and accepting the BIA Annual Plan and Budget. And that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to take questions, and Karn Hanna from the BIA is also here as well.
Okay. First, any questions from city council? Nope? Okay. I'd like to invite Karn to come up, please. We welcome your comments.
Karn Hanna from the Craft Gallery, and this is Daniel Castagnola from Castagnola's Deli. He's the vice chair of the BIA this year. So, good evening to everybody. One thing I wanted to say on Great Minds Thinking Alike, one of our discussion items at our last board meeting and at our marketing meeting, is to put more hydration stations in the village. I think it's a real priority, and because of the success we've been having with our Sippin' Strolls, which are fundraisers, and we have another Christmas fundraiser that we're planning, a Cookie Walk, where people can buy a tin that is a commemorative tin for the village, and then take it around to all the businesses and get free cookies. 100% of the proceeds will go to a nonprofit. So, all the Sippin' Strolls and the Cookie Walk are all producing actually a fair amount of money, and then part of the TOT is to go to infrastructure improvement. So, recycling cans, maintenance of the recycling and trash, education about recycling and trash, and the rehydration stations are, you know, that's it. That's what we want to talk about. You know, we're slow-moving, because we're almost all volunteers. We just have a very few consultants that we pay. So, it takes us a long time to get stuff done, but it's unanimous, those items have unanimous support within the BIA. So, I just wanted to touch on that, since it came up today. And Daniel and I are here to ask, answer any questions.
No, no questions, but I'm glad, all the activities you do in the village are great, and so, I'm supporting our city council recommendation here, hydration stations, definitely welcome, good idea.
Yeah, we hope we can help, you know, financially with some of that, and, you know, I'll be talking to Public Works and everything on how exactly that works, and what kind of space and the infrastructure that goes into it.
Okay.
All right. Well, thanks for your...
Congratulations to the new vice, yep, very good. Okay.
Thanks for your continuing support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, bring it back to city council for action.
I got a couple of comments. I think it's great. I like the partnership between the city and the BIA. I think the new TOT tax and that infusion of money into the BIA is money well-spent by the city. I'm encouraged by the fact that they're taking the money and doing things that are going to improve the village, because that's the one thing we're all on the same page, is just to improve the vibrancy of the village. I think the new rate structure is probably appropriate. It's long overdue. I think it benefits the businesses in the village to support themselves. So, any increased money that can go into promoting the village, I think is a good thing. So, with that, I'm going to approve a staff recommendation for the budget.
Second?
Okay, it's been approved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one opposed. Please let Sam know. Thank you, Larry. Did he come back in? So, I'd like to move on to sidewalk vending and compliance with Senate Bill 946. And thank you, Tony Instrucker. So, Director Hurley, I believe you have a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, and good evening, council. Before you tonight, we have a discussion on sidewalk vending ordinances. This past year, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act was passed under SB 946, and it became effective in January of 2019. Within the state regulations... Within the state regulations, there's new sidewalk vending regulations that permit sidewalk vending throughout the cities and counties of the state of California. And they apply to citywide, within our residential areas and our commercial areas. And sidewalk vending is allowed within sidewalks, pathways, and parks. So big changes in terms of what's been allowed at the state level. How can we protect ourselves from sidewalk vending and not have sidewalk vendors just roaming through our residential areas and commercial areas? There are ways in which to prevent, or to protect our city. First, any new standards have to be based on public health, safety, and welfare that we establish. We are allowed to put together time, place, and manner standards. There's specific protections for parks. Within a park, we can set up standards to protect the public use and enjoyment of natural resources and recreational opportunities. We can also protect our parks so that there's not an, just a highly concentrated area that of vendors that interferes with the park's scenic and natural resources. So when we start thinking about what our parks are, we have parks and open space within Capitola. And so when we go, when we start drafting this regulation and defining what a park is, we're going to want to bring in our open space areas, such as our beaches, and make sure that, you know, when we talk about Capitola and what's so special, it's much of the natural resource areas, those recreational opportunities, those views of the Monterey Bay, and starting to think about how we can protect those areas from our sidewalks, our pathways, and our parks. So. As we get into the new regulations, tonight I just wanted to provide you with an overview of what's to come and hear from you, how you'd like us to set this up. If you'd like the regulations to be more limited, to limit vendors to an extent, or be more protective in that we can create greater standards. So some examples are within sidewalks. The, under a limited regulation, the sidewalks could just maintain the ADA width of four feet. If we wanted to be a little more protective, we could set a standard of 10 feet for areas with high pedestrian activity. And again, it has to be tied back to safety and health and welfare. So we'd have to make those findings in establishing the greater, the greater widths. Another is, within the state regulations, you're allowed to establish separation from farmers' markets and swap meets and special events. So within a limited criteria, you could create a space actually within your farmers' markets or your swap meets for street vendors and allow them to be there just within a defined area. To be more protective, we could have a setback from the actual farmers' market, special event areas, such as, I've seen, I think it's in the city of Carmel, a 200-foot setback from those areas. So for Art &amp; Wine Festival, having a setback from that, or just our Sunday Art in the Park.
Can you, can you paint that picture for me? I don't, I don't know what you mean by setback.
Oh, a separation. A buffer.
So the vendor would have to be 10 feet from...
Oh, so sorry. Let's take a step back. Okay, so within the sidewalk, we could have a regulation for health and safety that, actually, we have to have a regulation for ADA. So you have to have a clearance on all sidewalks of four feet. So if sidewalk is only four feet wide, a vendor could not set up on a four-foot-wide sidewalk, because they would be in the way of your ADA requirement. But if you wanted to take it to the next step, so today, walking through the village around noon, our sidewalks are packed. And last night at the concert, the sidewalks are packed. So high pedestrian areas, we could increase that, that width based on the fact for health and safety reasons. If there were street vendors all along the Esplanade last night, as people are coming to and from the concert, it creates a health and safety issue, because there's just simply not enough width on that sidewalk. So setting the standard larger in areas where there's high pedestrian activity. So within the second one, for farmers' markets, we're allowed to protect for farmers' market swap meets and special events. So there, you could either permit it, you could allow a special area within each of those events, or you can create a buffer. So to say, if there's a farmers' market, the sidewalk vendors have to be 100 feet away from the farmers' market. Another portion of this is with time regulations, within the commercial areas, you're not allowed to limit the times. They have to be beyond what's allowed for a business in a commercial area. But within residential areas, you are allowed to limit those times, so they can be more restrictive. So in a, in a limited ordinance, we could limit those times from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but if we wanted to be more restrictive, it could be from 8:00 to 6:00. So it's really what's right for Capitola in limiting those hours and knowing what would be good for the welfare of our people in Capitola. And then roaming versus stationary vendors. So within parks, there's also an allowance that if, if the city has an exclusive concession stand within a park, such as we do in Esplanade Park with the beach rentals, then the city can prohibit additional stationary vendors within that park. And, but we do have to allow roaming vendors within parks to an extent. So some places have put in standards within park of a number of vendor licenses per acre. So a way to limit it so that we're still protecting, as I had shown in the previous slide, you know, our natural resources and recreational opportunities. So there's a way in which to limit those numbers even further beyond just health and safety standards. So this evening, what I was hoping to receive from the City Council was direction on how do we want to approach this standard, the standards? In larger cities, it seems to be they're, you know, they're not placing maximum number of licenses. They're a little less restrictive in areas that are similar to us, like Carmel, they're because of the, their, how their city has been built out with narrower sidewalks and less opportunities for vendors to be selling on their sidewalks. I would say they have a more protective ordinance in place. So what I was hoping to do is kind of get a gauge from you of where we should be establishing these regulations in terms of limited or protective. And then in September, I plan to come back with an ordinance, and then we can start fine-tuning it at that point. And, you know, if we have an eight-foot-wide sidewalk and we'll bring data on our sidewalk widths, and you think it should be bumped up to 10, we can fine-tune it during that next meeting. But this was really to gauge whether or not we should have many street vendors, and you don't think it would be a health and safety issue throughout Capitola, or if it should be more limited, more restricted. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, open for discussion? More questions? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No questions.
No questions? Okay.
Sanders.
Sam. I thought you wanted...
No, I'm sorry.
Sam, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that report. I have a couple of questions. One, I know restaurants are subject to the county health department and county health codes and inspections. Are these street vendors subject to the same requirements?
They are. So they're subject to business licenses and any state regulations, and also they'd be subject to the health requirements.
And which, I guess that goes in my second question. So we would be able to require that they be licensed and inspected if we were going to permit them anywhere?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So is there any anticipation that the new town center, formerly the mall, would be wanting vendors of any sorts? So would these regulations be done in conjunction with them? Have we reached out to them? I don't even know if this is an issue.
So that's private property that would be treated differently. So that would be outdoor display of goods or a special event permit, but that'd be private property.
That's all theirs.
They could build it in within a conditional use permit.
Okay. And how about our wharf?
The wharf would not fall under a street or sidewalk. So it's...
Because I know, I've been to cities where the wharfs have vendors and actually have all sorts of things going on in the wharf, from entertainment to food sales and such. So I was just wondering, would that fall under this?
The public facility?
Well, maybe we could find...
It's a public facility. So I mean, I think the easiest answer would be the new state law. I don't believe, I could be corrected, but I don't believe that the new state law would require us to have vending on the wharf. But that does, that would be an item that if the council wanted to adopt an ordinance and include in the sidewalk vending ordinance allowances or specific restrictions to the wharf, it would be within your discretion to do so.
Okay.
But I don't think you're mandated under this new state law to consider it.
Okay, and this is perhaps a stupid question, but I've got to ask it. So there's public right-of-way, like Riverwalk. I mean, that's private property, correct? So it's not an issue there?
I think, I think it is. Those public paths are identified as, as...
Oh, so it could be there too, on Riverwalk?
So the Riverwalk could be up on Depot Hill, the pathway looking right along the bluffs?
Yeah.
Those are public pathways that could be subject to vendors.
Okay, I stand corrected. Okay.
So what I was trying to get at with the definition of parks, we're probably going to want to pull in some of our open space and trail areas into our definition in order to protect those areas.
So I thought on the bluff, that was private property that the city maintains, but it's owned by citizens in that area.
It's actually a street right-of-way that's no longer a functioning street right-of-way. Grand Avenue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So it is public.
Okay. I think just for City Council's edification, in the new magazine, Western, what is it? Western?
Western City?
Yeah, they have a great article on this. So if you look at the new Western City. So at this point, I'd like to open it to public comment. I never would have guessed you would have come up.
It's so convenient that both these items were on the same agenda.
I know.
We discussed this at our, we sent the notice out to all the businesses in the village.
Thank you.
And we do have quite a few businesses represented today that responded to that. And we discussed it at our last meeting, and we did take like a stravo. We didn't have a motion or anything like that. But it was a unanimous vote that we would, we would recommend the more restrictive plan. I think that's, you know, it's pretty much in keeping with the way it's been. It's been working really well. Very few people have even attempted to be selling on the sidewalk. People ask me about it all the time. Can I come down and start selling my jewelry that I make and I set up on the seawall? And, you know, it's, that's been kept at bay, and I think that most of us really appreciate that. So the feeling was the more restrictive would be better. I got a few emails, and Sierra from Lumen Gallery asked me to state that she definitely feels that the more restrictive, the better, that sidewalk vending would go against what most of the businesses have been trying to create in the village. So, and then there's some other businesses here that might have it. But our, our vote in the BIA was unanimous to go for the more restrictive plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's come that Karn has mentioned from the BIA? Okay. Any more comments from the city, those who've come in here? No? Okay, bring it back to City Council for action?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I motion to have staff move forward with creating an ordinance that is highly restrictive in time, place, and manner standards. Second?
So it's been motioned and second? Any more discussion?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just hope that that, what that implies is that we can adopt the most protective restrictions that are allowed by the state.
Is that what?
Is that how you interpret that?
That's clear. Thank you.
I think that is okay. So with that in mind, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Okay, it passes. So moving on to consider an appeal of Embark. So item D, Capitola Section of Committee Decision to Issue...
Mr. Mayor?
What?
Do you want to call just a...
What?
I think you lost one of your peers. You may want to call a three-minute break here.
Oh, I didn't... Oh, she just disappeared. Okay. A little recess, thank you.
Pause for the class.
Pause, yes, pause. Okay. With that in mind, I'll get some water.
Here, I'll fill you up.
Yep, no problem.
Since you've been doing a lot of talk, I'm sorry.
This is an official break.
Yes. There you go. Okay. Did you buy that shirt? I've never seen an old shirt.
I have 180 long T-shirts.
I have a lot of long T-shirts.
180.
Jesus Christ.
Sorry, no. You're not...
You did not.
What would you like?
I have no...
I could count her off.
No, 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 no. When I bought this thing, I said, well, you know, that's going to be an unusual one. I don't know when I'm going to wear it, but... Oh gee, and I like the tie that goes with it.
Well, at least we got the picture.
Yes. Well, we have two pictures. I can take the one, no, they're not going to take yours. I wonder why she was late. Well, it's probably traffic.
You know, she actually was here in five minutes till. She was, you know, we were immature, because five minutes is cutting it close. She should have said, I'll be here in quarter till or something like that. But she was on time.
She was, oh, okay.
We like to be here sitting down. We just, you know, it just took her a couple of minutes to set up and get the letters out and get our capes on.
Right.
Right, it all worked out.
These years, I'm going to participate in that program a little bit more. I haven't done that. One year I was asked, because they didn't have someone for the local. One thing I'd like to do in the city though, is we don't have a lot of barrel podcasts. So I was talking to Willie, you know, he was complaining last year that there's not a lot of barrel podcasts. Listen here, I'm going to try to record.
Lots of them inside St. Joseph's.
That's right.
They collect food all the time.
Yeah, but there's only, there's, there could be a lot more.
That's weird. Can we get our barrel?
Now, everyone left.
Well, you started...
The last time I asked for a break, no one gave it to me, so I was like, I'm going to...
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. You asked for something, we always give.
Hey, wait a minute! I was going to...
Kristen can't eat them.
That's right!
Sam ate all of his.
What? You have some right there.
I covered them up. You want it?
Which one do you have? Oh, no.
You can have the M&M. You can't have the almond joint.
I was going to go for the almond joint.
I know. I was going to steal yours, but I remembered you love them.
Okay, I'm going to hide these two.
Everyone, anyone could have my Milky Way.
Kristen doesn't want them.
Okay. Quorum is back again, so... For item D, I'd like to request a process overview by Chief McManus.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Bertrand, members of the council. The next item before you this evening is an appeal of the city of Capitola's...
Chief, I just have a moment here. I'm awfully sorry.
Yes, sir.
Are there any comments from members of the City Council on this particular item?
I think we wanted to provide an opportunity to express any ex parte communications at this time. And so I think it would just be appropriate that I announced that during the application process, before the decision was made, we received requests from several applicants to meet. And I did meet briefly with the applicants from Embark Capitola. And I would like to share that as an ex parte communication.
And I too have met with Embark on two occasions.
Yeah, and I've met with representatives from Embark before the decision was made on one occasion.
I was reached out to also. I did not meet with any of them. And so I did not talk to any of the applicants. And I think it...
Same. I was reached out to. I'd not talked to any applicants.
Okay. So, sorry to interrupt you, Chief.
Mayor Bertrand, members of council, the item before you this evening is an appeal of the city of Capitola's retail cannabis licensing process, and I'm happy to provide a presentation.
the county who works for the Santa Cruz County Cannabis Licensing Office. One of the things that we decided early on was to not require the identification of a site as part of our application. And the reason we did that, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory, I'm gonna go over a couple of the points. As you're well aware, within the regional commercial zone in the city, it's a very small restricted area. And in fact, Capitola Road north to the freeway, and then both sides of, of 44, so that's the restricted area. And so the, as the police chief, the crime potential, or the actual crime in this restricted area is, is very much the same from one end of the, the regional commercial zone into the other end, and so it wasn't a significant consideration at all as it relates to the requirement, as some other municipalities have asked for, in the submission of the application itself. The other thing we didn't want to do is limit potential applications, and we wanted to expand it so that we could, as a city and staff, interviews those, those applicants that were representative of the type of partners that we were, and the community would like to work with in the cannabis program. And also, we have the CUP process to rely upon as part of the application and selection process, whereupon if there were some site-specific considerations, either on the law enforcement side or the city side, through the CUP process, we could consider or introduce some conditions that might mitigate some of those concerns. So, repeat myself, that we went forward without the need for applicants to identify a site. The application submittal period was from January 1 through April 2. There were 14 applications submitted. Those applications were submitted to the police department, and I thought it was really important that we identify as a staff, a single person who would be the contact person for all of the applicants, so that they had face-to-face contact, we had consistency in messaging as we were introducing this new program and answering several questions, as a matter of fact. And so I identified one of my administrative analysts downstairs in the police department to be the contact person for all of the applicants. She was tasked with receiving the applications, 14 of them, confirming the completeness of the submission, signatures, very important, proof of live scan for those, those partners within each of the organizations. And in fact, and this is good news, all 14 of the applications passed that initial review and moved into Phase 1 of the process, which was the application technical review process. That technical review timeline initially was April 17 through May 2. It needed to be extended because we were still in the process of identifying best practices locally, and ideally beyond the local area, as well as identifying the three non-conflicted panelists who we were going to ask to participate in this application review process. As you read there in our ordinance 5.36, no fewer than three non-conflicted individuals selected by the city manager were going to represent that panel. Now, this was not a face-to-face interview, this was a technical review of all 14 of the applications, reflective of our competitive merit-based license review that is described in 5.36. And some of the things that that panel was considering, they may consider as part of their, their review, we could ignore potential crime at the proposed location, that is in 5.36, but I think I've explained that we did not require a site as part of the application. The criminal, potential civil criminal background of applicants and other parties, experience in cannabis, other retail sales, problems and issues with other cannabis retail outlets, if there were any, local enterprise understandably within the region, and then information specific to the actual site. When I talk about site, I'm talking about the, we've learned in the state of California, the site security plans are fairly consistent because it's mandated by the state of California, and there are some local mandates as well. So when I say site, I'm not talking about an address, I'm talking about a proposed operation, and we'll get into that a little bit further in a minute. One of the things that was really important, we spent a lot of time trying to develop, and in fact, we did develop an actual scoring sheet, this is attachment number one in your packet, and this is the first page of that attachment, it's about a five-page attachment, but I thought it was important to present this as part of this hearing, to demonstrate our very meticulous, competitive merit-based process that we introduced, and the reliance upon best practices, again, locally and beyond. And so when you look at this, there were five actual areas of review that we determined as a staff and relied upon experts, including especially our consultant, cannabis consultant from HDL. And one of those five, for instance, in this slide, is a statement of purpose. This was 100, 100-point scoring system for the application, technical application review. You're looking at the statement of purpose, and then if you look to the right there, the factors to consider, there are several of them. What we wanted to do, if we listed a factor, and we decided upon this, these factors as a staff, when we listed a factor, we wanted to identify a source that was specific to that factor. For instance, providing medical cannabis, we know that that's a community benefit. Providing cannabis for select individuals, cost reduction opportunities, that's also a community benefit. If you go now a little bit further, for instance, green business certified, that's captured in our local climate action plan. So when we identified anchors, if you will, or factors, we thought it was important as best we could to identify the source that they came from. And so this is an example of the five-page scoring tool that the three panelists used to individually score each of the 14 applications. That technical review process, it was a two-day process, it took place on May 8th and 9th of this year, and as I mentioned, a three-person technical review panel. Our cannabis consultant from HDL, HDL was on the panel. The expert from San, Santa Cruz County's Cannabis Licensing Office, he was on the panel, as was a representative from the city, in fact, Captain Dally from my police department was on the panel. That three-person panel on those two days, the 8th and 9th, did a full review of all 14 applications, and each of those applications individually scored on a 100-point system based upon the factors that are included in attachment one, the scoring sheet. What you're looking at here is the result of the technical review of the 14 applications and all of the scores, from a high score of 93.67 to a low score of 64.17. The three parties to this appeal are listed appropriately on this slide, Embark, Apothecarium, and Treehouse, the others were not listed. I'm gonna switch to the next slide here, where you, where you can see, which is typically and often the case in my experience, where we were able to identify the top six of the group of 14. And we're able to do that based upon score alone. When you look there, in this, in my 33 years in law enforcement, and having been part of many technical reviews and face-to-face interviews, more often than not, you're able to separate the top group from, from the bulk of the applicants or the interviewees. And in this case, that's exactly what happened with the top six there. A range of scores from 93.6 to 86.8. So those were the finalists that moved forward from Phase 1, the technical review, into Phase 2, which was the actual presentation. The six applicants moved on to Phase 2, the eight non-selects were notified by way of US mail of their failure to move from Phase 1 into Phase 2. I made a personal call to Dave McPherson, our consultant with HDL, I was curious, he was a panelist, I was curious as to his thoughts of our finalist group. And so we had a short conversation, he shared with me that based upon his expert opinion, all six met the minimum qualification to proceed, and were all, in his opinion, considered relatively equal. And so going forward to Phase 2, the interview process, all six of the finalists were relatively equal going into that process. Again, we had a single point of contact within the police department, who notified each of the finalists and scheduled a 25-minute presentation on May 20, followed by a 15-minute Q and A. The finalists who inquired about the interview and the process of Phase 2 were provided this information that you see in front of you and nothing more than that. You'll see there that it's not all-inclusive, this is a list of some of the factors that we had discussed as a staff from the very beginning, shortly after the passage of Measure I in November, up until this point, of areas that we would certainly be interested in learning about with each of the now-six finalists, and even previously with the 14 applications. I did not want to provide a roadmap to all the six finalists and provide them every piece of information that we, as a panel, interview panel, were going to be evaluating, but I wanted to provide them some information as a guide so that they felt comfortable going into the next process. And in fact, our point of contact with the police department was the individual who provided that information to each of the finalists who asked for it. And you can look at some of the items there as we're talking, projected taxable revenues, that's important, vertical integration, the local 7% tax law here, what were their thoughts on that, and several of the others that you see up there on the, on the slide, to include demonstration of their ownership structure, financial position, et cetera. The interview panel participants, again, relied upon our ordinance 5.36, and that no fewer than three non-conflicted individuals were going to make up the panel as selected by the city manager. Those individuals were, in fact, the finance director, Jim Malberg, myself as the police chief, Captain Andy Dally, and our city manager. Those interviews or presentations took place, as I mentioned, on May 20, and six finalists, we used a forced ranking system to rate each of the presentations, and this is contained in two slides because I couldn't contain all of it on one slide. And I would assume that the majority of council, if not all, are familiar with the forced ranking system, but I think it's important that I touched on how it works a little bit. If you look at the top there, under reviewer one, and there were four reviewers, on the far left, simply stated, the first interview is, in this instance, is Firm A. They're the first one to interview on the 20th, and so they finish first. As you move to the right, the second interview, in this case, Apothecarium was the second presenter, they finished above Firm A, and so that's the ranking after two interviews. And if you move all the way to the right, to the sixth interview, which happened to be Treehouse, that is the ranking order from reviewer number one for all of the finalists, all six of the presentations. You're looking at reviewer two down below, and then as I switch the slide here, these are the results from reviewer number three and reviewer number four. That highlighted area, I just highlighted that, and, and I need to mention that in the package, the attachment, there's, there's a typo, it says Firm F in your attachment, it's actually Firm E. It's a simple typo, we know that Firm F, the last presenter, is Treehouse, and on this slide, they are at the top on both reviewer three and reviewer four. Really important, I think, to mention the amount of consistency using this forced ranking system, each of the panelists ranked the, the presenters, the finalists individually, and then it was captured at the conclusion of the interviews, which each, with each panelist providing their forced ranking results. All four of the panelists ranked Treehouse and Apothecarium in either the first or the second position, and three of the four ranked Embark in position number four, with one, reviewer number four, as you can see, ranking Embark in position number three. So we were really comfortable after the two-phase process and the conclusion of the presentations on the 20th of May, to identify the Apothecarium Capitola and Treehouse, Treehouse Capitola, as our potential licensees, but we still had an obligation by way of due process to do some follow-up and some background work on those two potential licensees. Captain Dally took the lead on that, the Apothecarium Capitola, they're, they're based, for lack of a better word, they have retail businesses in the city of San Francisco, and so Captain Dally contacted the San Francisco Police Department, as well as their Community Development Department, asking questions about how is the operation with Apothecarium in your city? They've been there for a good amount of time. They were very complimentary of Apothecarium and their operations, they cited that they were great partners with the city. And so that we were, we were comfortable in our conversations with San Francisco, with Apothecarium as one of our potential licensees here in our city. They, or Andy, Captain Dally, also visited locally the Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance, their operation in Watsonville, Santa Cruz, as you're probably aware, Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance is a partner with Apothecarium. And so we contacted the city of Watsonville, the same type of process Captain Dally did, he visited the business location in Watsonville, and each, each pieces were very complimentary of that operation in Watsonville. We did the same thing with Treehouse, that's a local Capitola retail outlet in the county on SoCal, and so we visited that retail business, did some follow-up with, with Sam LaForte from the county, he's the lead person with their cannabis unit within the county, and asked him about Treehouse and their operation, any concerns, their willingness to work with the community, and very, Sam and others, very complimentary of that operation as well. And so we were comfortable going forward with, after this part of the due process, with announcing that the Apothecarium Capitola and Treehouse Capitola were in fact the two potential licensees selected as part of the application process. On May 28, we notified formally those two potential licensees by way of a letter delivered from the city manager to Apothecarium and Treehouse themselves, while at the same time notifying by way of letter to the remaining four applicants who did not do, who did not move forward in the process. On June 13, we received the notice of appeal pursuant to our ordinance 5.36 from Embark, appealing our, Capitola's retail cannabis process. I think it's important that I jump down towards the bottom there, under Capitola Municipal Code 2.52, and mention to council, although I'm assuming that you're well aware of this, issues considered on appeal are limited to those raised in the notice of appeal. And I wanted to start there because I think it's important for this part of the process that I actually read the four issues that were revealed or introduced in the notice of appeal for council and for the public. Number one, the city did not proceed in a manner required by law. Number two, because the statute does not mandate consistent application of its review standards, it violated due process. Number three, the selection panel's decision was based on information of which the appellant was not apprised and had no opportunity to controvert or argue, and appellant was denied a meaningful hearing. And finally, number four, the panel's selection process was tainted by the consideration of false, fraudulent, or misleading information. I'm very comfortable, I'm speaking for staff and, and the city, we're real comfortable in our process, I think that we demonstrated a very competitive, merit-based process, as we committed to with the introduction of our code in 5.36. And I believe the appeal is based upon inaccurate assumptions and/or assertions, and I look forward to the opportunity of speaking further on that after the appellant presents their case. Thank you.
Any questions of the chief for clarification? Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, one follow-up question, when you noticed the applicants at Phase 2, and you had the screen that laid out the information communicated to finalists, did the appellant, did they inquire with you about those areas of interest that would be asked at the interview?
Not all of them, but several of them did, I think four of the six did. Did the appellant-
The appellant.
In Park, I'm sorry, Embark, in fact, did communicate with my analyst, asking for that information.
Okay, great, and you gave them that information?
I did, yes, on May 15.
Great, thank you.
You want a question?
No, I think not.
Ed?
Yeah, just curious, did the technical score have any weight on the final interview whatsoever?
All finalists entered Phase 2 relatively equal. It had no weight on the-
There was no, if you place-
a meaningful hearing. And finally, number four, the panel's selection process was tainted by the consideration of false, fraudulent, or misleading information. I'm very comfortable, I'm speaking for staff and the city, that we're real comfortable in our process. I think that we demonstrated a very competitive, merit-based process, as we committed to with the introduction of our code in 5.36. And I believe the appeal is based upon inaccurate assumptions and/or assertions, and I look forward to the opportunity of speaking further on that after the appellant presents their case. Thank you.
Any questions of the chief for clarification? Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, one follow-up question. When you noticed the applicants at Phase Two, and you had a screen that laid out the information communicated to finalists, did the appellant, did they inquire with you about those areas of interest that would be asked at the interview?
Not all of them, but several of them did. I think four of the six did. Did the appellant, in fact, did communicate with my analyst, asking for that information.
Okay, great, and you gave them that information?
I did, yes, on May 15th.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just curious, did the technical score have any weight on the final interview whatsoever?
All finalists entered Phase Two relatively equal. It had no weight on the...
There was no, if you placed first on that list, that had no bearing or no impact on what your final score would be?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that decision to do it that way was based in part of the consultation that the chief alluded to in his presentation with HDL, our cannabis tax consultant, who advised on that very issue about whether or not we should treat them equally, and their recommendation was that they were relatively equal at this stage.
Okay. I think we should move on to the next part of the presentation. Thank you, Chief. So at this point, we have a presentation from Embark for its case of 10 minutes. City Clerk, please, you have, thank you very much.
May we ask a couple of housekeeping measures first?
Yeah, please reset the clock, thank you.
I did not see our materials, our reply to the staff report in the packet in back, so we sent it electronically. I tried to reach out to the city manager earlier, but I want to make sure that you have these materials. May I approach the bench?
No, please hand it to the city clerk, thank you.
When were those sent to the city?
They were provided electronically. I don't know the exact time.
I did not receive anything.
Yeah, I didn't receive it myself.
I want to make sure that you have them now. Also, here's some letters from other applicants. I assume they're in the record, but they're not in your packet.
City Clerk, can you pass those to us?
I just need a copy.
Was this sent at 4:55 today?
I wouldn't know the answer. It was headed over this way.
That does appear to be the case. It appears that we received something at 4:55 this evening.
Okay.
And then, Honorable...
Hold on just a second, I have a question of our legal counsel. Legal counsel, I have a question. Should we take some time to review this material before he continues his presentation?
I've actually taken an opportunity during the extended jewel box discussion to look at those materials. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at the conclusion of the city staff's rebuttal. The council does have the discretion to ask additional follow-up questions. I'd be happy to address the reply memorandum that was delivered at the 11th hour and 59th minute by Mr. Massara and the law firm that represents the appellant's.
And I have only one copy, it appears, of each. So, I guess we'll just...
Representative Embark, our legal counsel will give a summary.
Quick question.
Okay, I just want, can you give us some point discussion about his...
Sure.
Okay, because I want to see that information.
This is a pretty typical tactic you'll see where an individual will come at the last second to deliver a bunch of material to a decision-making body in the effort to get the decision-making body to continue the hearing. They've already requested a continuing...
There's no need to disparage the appellant here.
Okay, so the city council will receive your comments and will consider your comments.
Correct. I think at the end would be an appropriate time because it's their final reply brief, and if you have questions about them, they reiterate everything.
Yeah, okay, so Ed?
Just for clarification, I just had a question of the city clerk. To your knowledge, you had not received these prior to this meeting?
I had not.
Thank you.
Okay, to your, we do not have time to read this, but we're going to accept these comments.
We respectfully request 15 minutes, Your Honor, and then five minutes for rebuttal. There's obviously been a lot of material and explanation associated with the staff report. In, to reply to the city attorney, part of the reason that it's been difficult to get these materials to you earlier is we're just still receiving the tail end of the public records request.
Okay, so you were given an opportunity earlier to ask for extended time. I believe the city manager did approach you, so you did not take...
I approached the city manager, actually.
Okay.
But I didn't get a response.
Hold on a second. Would the members of the city council like to give this representative more time so that we go to 15 minutes?
I would give two more minutes.
Two more minutes?
Yeah. I'll bump it up to 12.
12? Okay, so we'll give you 12 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm Mark Massara, and I have the privilege tonight of representing Embark on their appeal. We're grateful for this opportunity, for the appeal, and to be able to discuss with you Capitola's dispensary permit process and Municipal Code Section 5.36. Essentially, we have just two issues for your consideration: the legal issues and then the ethical problems associated with this process. The legal problem is obvious enough. The process, as prescribed by the municipal code, has been irretrievably broken and tainted by explicit deviations from the required process and by demonstrable affirmative misrepresentations by certain applicants in violation of their executed business affidavits as part of the process that in turn led city staff to play contortionist with the rules of engagement by adding phases and substituting new panel members and even selectively conducting field trips, site visits, and unfair ex parte rendezvous with the winner, all in flagrant disregard of the original published rules pertaining to the dispensary permit process. The legal issues are definitely set forth in our PowerPoint presentation.
Larry, can you give him a hand, please? Thank you. Our IT, he's not, our assistant will be taking care of that. Hold on.
If we could stop the clock.
Yeah.
Briefly, first, your staff did not proceed according to the clearly prescribed Code Section 5.36. After all, Embark won the application process per the code. Two, but then staff invented Phase Two with a new criteria and a new panel with new members without publication or public notice. Three, there was no notice to applicants regarding the new criteria, which is especially disconcerting, given your staff's contention now in the staff report and the city attorney's analysis, that the city doesn't need to abide by any criteria. Either way, the process clearly violated Embark and the other applicant's due process rights. Worst of all, the new Phase Two panel members relied on and made decisions and choices based on misleading affirmative misrepresentations regarding fraudulent materials provided by Jason Swett and Apothecarium deliberately designed to imply their right to use a facility that had been under the exclusive lease right of Embark. And while staff tonight has attempted to discount the notion of having a site, it was in fact a critical component in every aspect of this process, and how could it not be? So the legal issues are prominent enough, yet despite the obvious legal issues, it's the practical, political, and moral problem that should give you, your staff, the city and Capitola residents, the most heartburn. In fact, if this process had concluded in an orderly manner, legal problems associated with it could probably have been overlooked. But because of how the process ended, your political problem is metastasized. The issue is this: your rules required honesty and prohibited misrepresentations. This is the business affidavit that was required for all applicants. It requires honesty, it prohibits falsifications, it's not optional, it's mandatory, it's executed under penalty of perjury, it requires truth, it prohibits misrepresentations. Following the written application process, however, it became clear that one of the principles was not honest at all, but had instead engaged in a deliberate, knowing fraud and a scam. And perversely, he won following the Phase Two interviews and the opaque field trips, both of which fell outside the prescribed municipal code process. So now we know, following the Public Records Act information disclosure, and you know that local Embark principal Jason Swett was fraudulently playing both sides of the fence, pretending to be an exclusive representative for Embark while in fact secretly partnering with Apothecarium. And worse, Jason misappropriated Embark's exclusive site location to represent that site on behalf of Apothecarium. Here you see it plain as day. In case you or your Phase Two interview panel are confused, note even the physical street address is exactly the same as the exclusive Embark site. This is what Apothecarium provided to you as what they intended to provide you with a dispensary. Slide six, or slide seven is the landlord's letter. Now, say you're still confused, say, you know, like your staff, you claim there's no prejudice, there's no unfairness, say you believe you had no duty to question Jason about the scam, or you didn't realize that despite being in back-to-back interviews in this Phase Two process, no one asked. How is it possible? You know, let's look at the letter from the landlord of 1850-41st Avenue. Hopefully, that's clear enough. Okay, this is bad enough, right? Embark is ashamed and embarrassed not to have uncovered this scam sooner, not to have notified you and the city sooner, or that you neglected to inform us sooner, et cetera. But all of this would likely not mean anything significant as had his, had this secret alliance not become the winner in your contorted application sweepstakes process, but it did. Jason and Apothecarium actually did win as a result of their fraud. That makes this bigger than simply Embark's problem. It makes it your problem, and that's why this matters, and that's why that you must uphold this appeal. There are only two conclusions that can be drawn. Either Jason won because you, like us, were duped in this scam, in which case we're all in this together, or something more sinister occurred where your staff either knew or should have known and didn't say anything, didn't alert you or Embark to Jason's fraud, either during the Phase Two interviews or thereafter. And you might wonder, how can I say that? Because as part of this strange post hoc Phase Two appendage to the original authorized application process, Jason and Apothecarium interviewed prior to Embark and Jason interviewing. And despite that, not a single word was said, not a single question was asked. Like, for example, "Jason, how do you intend to manage both partnerships if you win? Jason, if both parties win, who will actually use the site at 1850-41st Avenue? Jason, how can you represent that Apothecarium will use 1850-41st Avenue when Embark and the landlord for the property both represent that Embark has exclusive right to that property? Jason, if you're a partner in Embark, how could you allow Apothecarium to use a visual simulation for a site you know is not available? That plainly violates the business affidavit. Instead, crickets. Despite the fact that the PRA request and interview notes for Apothecarium demonstrate that they misappropriated and used Embark's exclusive site for their visual rendering, and that the site and that visual rendering was discussed in the interview, not a single interviewer asked a question about Embark using the same site in its interview. How could this have occurred? It defies belief. In other words, it's inescapable that the process is tainted and legally defective and violates both the municipal code itself and the explicit terms of the application process and the business affidavit wherein applicants were required to be honest. Under any scrutiny or analysis, Jason was not honest. Apothecarium was not honest. Thus, the inevitable conclusion is that this process, which was required by the city code, has been irretrievably tainted, both legally and morally, both in letter and in spirit. These affirmative misrepresentations and fraudulent misconduct are in direct violation and contravention of the city's published rules. It is therefore legally mandated that you and the city reset this process and hand this process over to an independent third party for correction. And fortunately enough, HDL is already assisting the city. With their experience and expertise, we're confident that they can get the job done in compliance with the ordinance and avoid the legal and political train wreck caused by one bad actor who single-handedly caused havoc on the entire dispensary application process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we're going to city staff response. We'll give the same amount of time.
12 minutes.
12 minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to start off our rebuttal. We'll talk about a couple of very clear factual inaccuracies and assumption. And in fact, no other applicant asserted that they had lease or site control for 1850-41st Street, while other applicants provided, as mentioned, conceptual designs and renderings of potential designs for specific sites. They clearly articulated during the interview that they did not have a lease currently for any site. The Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance, although it suggested that their participation, at least in the appeal, was detrimental to the appellant's interview. In fact, Santa Cruz Veterans Alliance participation was a benefit, was an asset to the presenters. If you look at the final scores, Embark and Apothecarium finished 1 in 4 out of 14 total applications. So the suggestion or the presentation that the participation was a detriment to Embark, in fact, is not true. Embark was not ranked as highly as other applicants in the interview process due to two primary factors. Based upon the interview, CEO had no prior experience in cannabis dispensaries or operations based upon the presentation and the interview. And Embark was unable to articulate their actual or proposed ownership structure. On two occasions, two panelists asked specifically direct questions related to the ownership of the organization. None of the presenters were either able or willing to answer questions about that ownership during the presentation. One of the real important reasons for, I believe, having the ability to have face-to-face interaction and a face-to-face interview by way of a presentation with the finalists, questions like this are important. And when those questions were asked twice to the Embark team, they were simply not able to answer the question related to the ownership structure or weren't willing, and I'm not sure which one. I'm going to turn to our attorney now, who's going to provide more information with regard to the rebuttal to the appellant's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I would note, just on the tail end of this slide, if I recall correctly, the ownership structure was one of the criteria that was sent out to the finalists who asked for information about what would be considered. That was a specific item that was listed in the non-exclusive list. So it does beg a question if they knew that that topic was going to be inquired on and they were unable to answer it. It does beg, you know, consideration by the council. Moving to the legal aspects of the appeal as opposed to some of the factual assumptions, and as you note in the actual appeal, they do say, "On information and belief, we assert the following." And aside from a single document that they've, that you've been shown as well, which has a rendering of the address on it, there's no, I don't, I didn't hear any factual testimony or any other source that suggested that these false representations were made. So an absence of facts, if you will, just to observe on that. But going through their four points on appeal, you know, as the chief has talked about, the records demonstrate a diligent effort. This is a summary slide, I'm going to get into a more detailed slide next, but I'll jump ahead right now, in fact. I wanted to start with the first topic. It had four subheadings. The first one was "Failure to Proceed in a Manner Required by Law." Now, you saw in the city attorney analysis that I addressed each one of these points in turn. They first argued that it's an abusive discretion, which is a pretty... They first argue that it's an abusive discretion, which is a pretty difficult standard. You have to act arbitrarily, capriciously, and entirely lacking in evidentiary support for the decision you made. As described by the chief, I don't believe that what has been articulated as what the city staff did constitutes a arbitrary and capricious decision. In fact, it seems to be a reasoned, considered decision based on some, you know, application of criteria by numerous individuals who all came to similar conclusions. That's not a arbitrary and capricious decision just based on their assertion that it is. The burden of proof I should note here is on the appellant's, too. Embark LLC is, Embark Capital LLC is the one who has to prove the points that they're making to you today. They can suppose and suggest and hypothesize, but they have to prove it. And I didn't hear anything suggesting that there was proof behind a lot of the allegations. But the first subheading was a consistency with the code itself, the capital and municipal code. And one of the issues that they've identified, and they've also identified this in their reply brief, which I'll talk about later, is that the city acted outside of the factors that were listed in the statute. And based on a very interesting argument that the word "may" is a restrictive word and that it means may only consider the following, that's just simply not the appropriate statutory construction. As you all know, I've dealt with a number of cases and defended statutory interpretations in the past. That's not a harmonious reading of the statute. It's not a logical reading of the statute. And it ignores expressed language in the statute that says, "The city may consider all of the following, including what's in the community's best interests." Nowhere in their presentation and their materials do they acknowledge that there's another factor. They try to refuse any other interpretation other than the mandatory six. That's just not a reasonable interpretation of the code. I should also note, in their original appeal, the very last sentence here, they assert that our code references to a subsection 5. B, but it doesn't. And I think that underscores that the appellant's here don't have a full grasp of the code. Their appeal document itself didn't accurately quote the ordinance, and I think that may have driven some of the misunderstandings that were associated with that. Subsection B is ignoring, quote, "seemingly important criteria." Again, this is just a tangent of that prior argument, which is, you know, you have to consider all these things. Well, those things may be considered, but it's a legal axiom here. Weight versus admissibility. How much weight they give to any factor is entirely within the panel's discretion. And as long as they exercise that reasonably, they are acting lawfully. In this case, the city did not ignore seemingly important criteria, which also begs the question, "Important to whom?" Now, maybe appellate Embark thinks it's particularly important because they had a lease locked down and they intended to use that to their advantage, but the city had determined that although that was a factor, it wasn't going to be when given a significant amount of weight because it would essentially result in a race to the bottom, where the person who got the lease first would be the only person who could get the application license, or get the license, rather. And that's not the intent of the statute. The intent of the statute is to get the best possible fit for the city, not the person who first got a lease in place. The final subheader here was use of, I mean, this is again, as I said, they're all kind of tied into each other, but "use of unenumerated criteria for assessment." And this is based on their assertion that when it says you may consider the following factors, it means you may only consider these factors and none other. Again, that's not the right reading of the statute. That's not a reading of the statute that a court would necessarily come to. Agencies are given discretion with how they interpret their regulations, if they're reasonable, and they're presumed to duly act in the course of law. And if somebody wants to allege that they acted arbitrarily or capriciously, they need to prove it. In this case, making the argument that the city's utilization of additional factors, which is permitted by the statute's permissive language and by its reference to evaluation of community needs, it's just not a harmonious reading of the statute. It'd be rejected by a court, in my opinion. Subheading D, "Deviation from a Published Schedule and Process." Again, this is based on a very narrow reading of the statute, that if the city did not act exactly in the manner that the appellant's expected it to, that it would have violated the rules essentially of the ordinance. That's not true. The city's interview was not an abuse of discretion. The city conducting a panel of interviews, three of whom, sorry, a panel of interviewers. Three panelists did a written review. Four panelists did an in-person review. That's a pretty reasonable and not arbitrary way to go about evaluating potential applicants and licensees. The city followed the requirements of the law, and I don't see any identification of a specific deviation in the voluminous material that was submitted to us. The second main allegation here is just due process was violated. There's multiple elements to due process, process and substance. But again here, notice and hearing was provided, there were neutral decision makers, and the city applied objective criteria. Now, would all of the applicants, all of them, love to have been given every single question and every single roadmap for how to get through that process so they could get the best possible chance at winning? Of course. But they weren't given everything. They were all given a fair opportunity, and the city used criteria to apply it. Lack of a fair hearing, again, this comes to Embark not knowing about its own business partners' ventures and an allegation that the city should have informed Embark. There's no legal requirement for this. It does sort of ask a better question, which I think that their counsel, a very persuasive speaker, articulated, which is, "We should have caught that sooner. You probably should have. You probably should have known your business partners, associations, and affiliations." And the fact that he kept multiple irons in the fire and didn't put all his eggs in one basket means he was a little bit more savvy in that respect, and he was ultimately part of a successful application team. I just don't see legal grounds for the argument that if this person's part of the team, that, you know, the city has to notify everybody. That's not true. There's no factual basis for that. There's no legal basis for that. So I appreciate that they're upset, and there might be some sour feelings left after a partnership and a business venture kind of broke down, but ultimately, that's not a grounds to turn over the decision. It's not a legal basis to contest a decision. The last and final one is the false, fraudulent, misleading information. I heard a lot of well-spoken advocacy about how the process was derailed by an individual who decided to play some subversive games. As the chief testified here, or I guess he didn't take an oath, but he's generally an honest guy, has explained to you that during that process, nobody made an assertion that they owned the property, right? That they had an exclusive right to use it. In fact, they went to some lengths to disclaim that they didn't have the rights to the property. It was a model rendering presented for illustrative purposes, not as a representation of the actual business plan site or model. So with that mistaken factual assumption, I don't hear or see evidence of abuse of discretion, especially one lacking in any evidentiary support for it. In fact, I've seen the opposite. I've seen a really reasonable presentation by the city staff of a two-phase interview where part of a panel conducted a written review, the other part of the panel conducted an in-person interview, and they applied criteria as they were permitted to in an enabling statute that allows them some latitude to make the appropriate decisions, as long as they do so in a fair and even-handed manner. And I think you saw from the scoring sheets and the force ranking that it was remarkably fair and even-handed. These were conducted blind. They didn't consult as they did them. So with that, I would say that would conclude our initial rebuttal. Of course, I'll remain available to answer questions after the appellant gives their final rebuttal, so to speak, as part of council deliberation. There was a reply brief delivered, as you know, and I can speak to all the elements of that.
Okay. At this time, though, we're going to open to public comments. So those in the audience who would like to make public comments at this time, you're limited to three minutes. Please come for it. I see someone starting to stand up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name's Scott Hawkins. I am on the Apothecarium team and S12, and a former resident of Santa Cruz County for 18 years. And appreciate very much the effort that's, that the city staff and Chief McManus and the entire team has taken to ensure good process. We submitted a response, actually Ryan Hudson, our CEO, submitted a response that can be found on page 177 of the packet, that addresses some of the issues, or allegations really, that were raised in the appeal and also this evening. Importantly, Mr. Swett informed us, as a managing member of SCVA, he had already negotiated a non-exclusive and relationship with, via an MOU, with another party. We didn't even know who that party was, and we didn't ask. Mr. Swett had no involvement, little involvement in our application, except for looking at a revised or reformatted resume of his. And we did not provide him with access to any materials, nor did we, of course, receive any materials from him. And according to Mr. Swett, he did not, he had minimal, if any, involvement with the other party's application. He served merely as, in our case, as another stakeholder in the capital community, one that's been dedicated to the interests of veterans throughout the county and could help further efforts upon receipt of a license, if we were so awarded one. Also, the, just to follow up on the issue of the property, we never assumed we had any connection to it, except it was potentially available. Because as we learned from, and we never spoke with the owner, however, we did speak with his representative, who stated that the lease that was signed, I believe a week prior to the application submittal deadline, was contingent upon the other parties, again, didn't know the party's corporate name, contingent upon them winning a license. And we used it only because it was a familiar property to the community, and also I believe other applicants did the same. Again, only for lustre of purposes and to demonstrate the, how the Apothecarium brand would fit in the beautiful town or city of Capitola. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others from the public would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, at this point, I'd like to bring it back to Embark's rebuttal for five minutes.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. If we could go back to slides. So with respect to the last speaker and the innocent use of 1850-41st Avenue, I'll just refer again to the landlord's letter. There shouldn't be any confusion or misguided motivations regarding who was able to use and who has secured the use of that site. Considerable effort went into that process, of which Jason knew full well. If I understand the city attorney's argument correctly, he says that we're being unreasonable because we want to rely on the code itself and that it's too narrow because the city has, in essence, and in the city attorney's opinion, the discretion to come up with any criteria, make any right-hand turn or left-hand turn in the process, and so there really is no reliable criteria. And we should be faulted for trying to hold the city accountable on the code. Reasonable, arbitrary, and capricious. Is it reasonable to invent a Phase Two? Is it reasonable to give the criteria for Phase Two only to people that ask for it? Is it reasonable to take field trips and have ex-party rendezvous with only the winners? Is it reasonable to ignore the scores associated with the prescribed Phase One and then not utilize them at all for Phase Two? And if I understand the law enforcement official correctly, the way Phase Two came about is he called somebody and they suggested it would be a good idea. And so then they just went with it. And if I could show you one more slide here, these are some of the notes from the Phase Two interviews. Now, I know tonight we saw these really nice little scorecards made it look like everybody agreed. Well, what we have, and this is a result of the public records request, are things that are unintelligible. There is no rhyme or reason, except that what you notice is that the site was really important throughout this whole process, as it should be. I mean, it would, it's illogical to say, "Go open a cannabis dispensary if you don't even know where it's going to be." How can you answer all the other questions associated with this process, like security and community character and the other really important aspects? And that's why the site was critical to this discussion. And what I really like here is this notion that we should be faulted for having been the victims of a fraud in this process. Well, okay, let's say that staff's correct in that regard. What you cannot do then as a result of that is award the license and the permit to the bad actor. That would be the worst possible result of this entire process. And so all we're trying to do is give you some mechanisms whereby this process can be corrected. And you don't, you necessarily have to start over, but you do need to correct the defects. You can't simply say, "Oh, gosh, Embark really got taken advantage of. Boy, those guys, they just fell off the back of the truck. But, you know, fair and square, that other guy got away with it, and here you go. Here, you're the victor." That makes no sense whatsoever. Regarding the claim that the ownership structure of Embark caused the interviewees to not understand or appreciate the ownership structure, all that really needs to be said here is that 100% of the ownership of Embark participated in that interview. So it was all there. Those participants in the interview represented 100% of the ownership of Embark. And so what you don't have is a publicly traded Canadian conglomerate representing that they're going to serve the community of Capitola, which is what occurred in the end of this process. You had 100% of the ownership structure in that interview. So it doesn't wash that that was a valid reason to conclude that those notes somehow result in a fair process that's not arbitrary and capricious. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, we open to city council's questions of staff and the appellant. Who would like to start?
Questions or comments?
These are questions of staff and appellant. No questions at this point. I do have a question, though. In terms of structure, did chief, did everyone understand that question when that came out? And did everyone answer that question and have no issue with it, except for one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming you're talking about questions related to the ownership structure of a...
Yes, I am.
I believe with great confidence that they understood the question, yes.
And how about the response of all the various applicants in the final phase?
Yeah, I'm not, I hesitate to say that I recall all of the questions of all of the interviews for the six panelists, but the questions were direct and I'm confident that
Okay.
As one of the panelists, my recollection is that I definitely remember the top two panelists, given that we're six weeks out from those interviews, answered that question very directly. I know that most of the other applicants, I couldn't say if one of the other bottom-ranked applicants had trouble with that question like Embark did.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I might have misunderstood your question. I thought you were referring to, did all of the participants of all six finalists understood if, when we asked that question? In fact, I think you're asking about, did all the participants from Embark understand that question?
Well, that's another question I was going to follow up on, but my main issue here is that, did the panelists, excuse me, was the question phrased accurately enough so that the finalists, the six, understood what it was? And then my concern also is, did they respond? I'm trying to get an idea of how they responded to that accurately phrased question.
See if I can answer it this way. I didn't ask the question. I recall one of the gentleman's answer to that direct question about the ownership structure is that we haven't sat down as an ownership team to discuss that yet, but we'll have that figured out before the, if we're rewarded the license.
This is for Embark.
That's for Embark, correct.
Okay. Okay. Does that correspond with your recollection?
Yes, I believe that was either the first or second response to that question. I recall that other firms responded with answers like 75/25, 75% this individual. I recall that other firms responded with answers like 75/25, 75% this individual, 25%.
So there was no hesitation? It was just Embark that evaded that question or did not answer it completely?
Again, the bottom two applicants had some trouble with other questions as well. So I just don't remember what their specific challenges were, but certainly the top four, which was Embark, the two that were issued, and then applicant C, the other three of the top four had no trouble answering that question.
Okay. Any other questions here? No? Okay. I'd like to go on to council deliberation and a motion.
Did you want to discuss the reply brief that was deliberated?
Yes, I'm awfully sorry. Thanks for reminding me of that. Yes, the information that was provided by Embark in that, and you did have a chance to review it, so I appreciate it.
Yes, jewel box went longer than expected.
Okay. You took advantage of that.
I'll be brief on this because we weren't given a substantive amount of time to review it, but thankfully, there's not a whole lot of new information for the council to consider contained in this document.
I just want to consider it since it was brought forward.
Absolutely. I think that's an appropriate response.
I apologize. I can't bring it up.
Well, as we encounter...
Can you read from your notes? If you can't, push it up to the screen.
Give him a minute.
What?
Give him a minute.
Okay, sorry.
Why is it not... Why is it not... There we go. Get him a minute. Go on. It's toggling now. It's on here. Okay. No, I don't. It's toggling between this and...
Can you hear it? Let's see. I think it's nice. Those are just not showing up on the screen.
It's just not showing up on the screen. I could use that jump drive. Oh, no, I can't. You can do it there.
I just want to read this three seconds.
Switch to this TV.
Hold on. No, we got it.
We got it over there.
We got it over there. All right.
So this is the letter that the... Pardon me for scrolling too quickly. The reply to the city's memorandum, which didn't come until after this council meeting had already begun this morning. As you can see, again, they're just parroting some of the prior messages they had written. And, you know, I would also note that the letters that accompanied this, the two letters, one from One Plant and one from Garland to other failed applicants, are copy paste letters that were written very clearly in a, you know, at the request of what I believe to be Embark because they recite and parrot these exact same points, man are required by law, et cetera. I'll show those to you in a moment. But the selection panel did not proceed as required by law. They just repeat the prior citations that they made that I did not find very compelling under the context of this case, again, arguing inconsistency with the Capitola municipal Again, they reiterate this issue here, which is, may consider these six factors. This is an argument that says the statute does not say the city may consider these six factors and also any other factors. If the city council intended it to say so, it would read differently. The city wants to say it, has to say, "may also consider." But, you know, that's just an argument we're having about statutory analysis because it does not say, "may only consider," which if it did, would very clearly restrict the city to those six criteria. But "may consider the following is viewed and interpreted permissively." So it's kind of a recycle of the prior argument. Again, we get down to the next paragraph here. Panel shall review the applications considering factors' importance to the community, and then they bold, including those listed within subsection A5. And again, the next sentence says, "Determined to best meet the requirements of this section bolded," and they un-bold the community's needs. So you can see they're picking and choosing here. They only want the six criteria evaluated. They don't want community need. They don't want factors of importance to the community to be added in and considered. And I think that's because they only want one result, which is they want the license, right? But it's not a reasonable construction. I thought this was an interesting citation here. They know it's not a novel legal issue. A court facing a similar question concluded that, you know, they applied the wrong criteria. I've looked at this case. It's a public works contracting case where the agency, a district, awarded a contract to somebody, and they tried to create criteria for minority-owned business good faith efforts. That is strictly governed by the public contract code and state law. So they were trying to override a state law with local regulation, which you can't do. So not exactly on point for the point that they're trying to make. Going even further down here into page now three, again, the first paragraph here talks about the creation of an entirely new phase and how that was totally inappropriate, an entirely new panel, which is semantics. There was a panel. Some of the members did a written interview. Some of the members did an in-person interview. You could call those two panels, but it's really just a matter of semantics. The city manager, you know, put together a panel constituted of no less than, more than, three non-conflicted individuals who applied neutral criteria. So I don't see any validity to that. Again, the second paragraph sort of parrots the first. This is a new argument here, and it's in addition, this section of the CMC limits the code for one person to one license. I would note for you that this is a new argument raised on appeal. Basic rules of court and fundamental fairness. Don't let people sandbag their arguments till the very end and introduce new arguments for the first time, especially at an 11th hour submittal. But I would note that what this actually says is that a person can only hold one license, right? It doesn't say that you can't apply for multiple licenses. They're arguing that because it says you can only end up having one license per owner or operator, that Mr. Swett's participation was a violation of the ordinance. It would be a violation of the ordinance if he held, or if a proprietor or an owner held multiple possibly, but that didn't result here, and so it's not a violation of the ordinance. It would be convenient for the appellant if that were the case, but it does not say you can only apply for one. It says that you may only hold one, meaning that if you win, maybe you have to make a choice about which application or which group you proceed with. Again, this final section here about the statute mandating a selection process by a panel, that's again, that's semantics about panel, panels, you know, no less than three, no more than three. It doesn't make a whole lot of difference. The publication of rules, regulations, and standards enacted by the chief, this is their argument that the city needed to promulgate much more than it did. And the section of the code that they're talking about, A12, allows the, it's called a, the city council, by creating that ordinance in that way, which allows the chief of police to city manager or designate to promulgate binding rules and regulations, is done so you don't have to come back and amend your ordinance every time. It's appropriate for the city to do that so that it doesn't have to constantly amend its ordinance. And what it talks about is the chief of police's ability to, you know, if he wants to make a regulation because we have a new problem, we can address it. And specifically subsection A12D talks about promulgating advertising regulations. So this spans the gap from, if he wants to add very strict regulations for the interview process, he can do so. He has to promulgate and publish them. And if he wants to add regulations that govern strictly the advertising, he can do that as well. He just doesn't have to go back to the council. It doesn't prohibit him from utilizing criteria or any of the other members of the interview process from utilizing reasonable objective criteria in discharging their obligation and doing their duty to assess these people on a competitive merit-based process. Scrolling even further down, now we're on page four. This is a false statement of fact. The selection panel invented the deliberative process Phase Two, not contemplated by the ordinance, after the point-based review was completed. That's not true. City staff told you that they had been thinking about that interview Phase Two type of evaluation process long before the applications were received and after the ordinance had been enacted. And they were, yes, fine tuning the criteria leading into that, but they didn't create it suddenly after seeing that Embark had ranked number one after the written phase, and that was not going to happen, so they had to create a new phase to try and knock Embark out. That's just not borne out by the evidence, the record, or reasonable, you know, I think they said something nefarious afoot. It just seems a little bit cloak and dagger for me. Denial of due process. These are the same cases they cited in their original briefing. There's no new material here. There's no additional, there's no case analysis, and I've looked at these cases as well, and they don't have the type of application to this fact pattern that would lend support to Embark's case. Again, scrolling down, this is number one, bullet point one here. We created a review process after Phase One ended. It's not true. It's a misrepresentation of what happened. The decision of whether to rely or use so-called Phase Two rankings, you know, based on a small number of city staff members, and I think that's supposed to suggest that the staff members aren't to be trusted when they're just non-conflicted individuals in conformance with the ordinance. But they didn't decide ultimately that they would have no bearing on their final decision. They sought expert consultant advice, the consultant whom Embark has told you was a great consultant, HDL. Use HDL. Well, HDL told us they were all relatively equal. We did use HDL. Going to the next page, which is page five, this little tail end of this sentence right here, which suggests this panelist, they're showing you those handwritten notes up there where one of the panelists had written during the interview process, 1850. That's the address that's at issue here. And so they suggest that this panelist considered site location. Or it suggests that that panelist wrote down that address because it came to their mind. And sometimes when we take notes during interviews, we inanely write down the things that are said. What they're asking you to do is to not listen to the people who were in the room and told you what their assessment was. And they're asking you to extrapolate from a note, a handwritten note on one document, that it was considered in the process and that the whole process has been tainted because that address was mentioned somewhere else. Doesn't seem like a reasonable construction. There's some more factual assertions here. Jason Swett's involvement tainted the review process because he engaged in deceptive or misleading business practices. Well, if that's the case, that sounds like a business lawsuit for the two businesses to sort out. If there's unlawful practices, they should feel free to exercise their rights to, you know, pursue those, but I don't see any evidence of that. And the failure to disclose the allegiance here, the dual allegiance, again, there's no legal basis to complain about that. And ironically, Apothecarium knew about the dual allegiance and didn't ask any questions because it didn't matter to them. They thought they'd float or sink on the merits of their own application. Again, right here, the last part. It is implausible at best that Mr. Swett's uncertain allegiance was not relevant to the asserted concern about the ownership structure. Implausible at least, again, because they're assuming things that are contrary to what you're being told by individuals who you can weigh their, their words to you today and determine whether you're going to believe on information and belief that something happened or whether you believe what the people who are there are going to tell you. Scrolling down to page six, there's only one more. I'm going as fast as I can while covering all the content, which is necessary since this came so late in the day. That's all just complaining about Mr. Swett's involvement and the fact that Embark was unaware of it. Again, application included misleading information. You can say it as many times as you want to, it doesn't make it true, right? We're all entitled to our own opinion. We're not entitled to our own facts. You've heard that chief of police and other panelists were told, they did not have an exclusive right to use it, that it was a representation model. You don't have to believe the city staff, but the allegation that's being made here is that these applicants lied to the city staff and that the city staff is now lying to you about what they were told. That's ultimately what you have to conclude, to believe the appellant's position here, which is that there was false, misleading, deceptive information, which, again, I haven't seen any evidence of that, and it is their burden to produce that evidence. Again, further on down the line, more complaints about the 1830 41st, I thought it was 1850 30 41st Avenue, I guess it is down here, but it's different in this paragraph. But again, just a complaint about the location of the business. As you've heard, clearly, the representatives did not speak to that issue. And finally, this final sentence is sort of like a hail mary, right? The application form required that they understand misrepresentations, omissions, and falsifications may result in being disqualified. Not shall, but may. So you have permission there. You can not disqualify somebody. But to the extent Apothecarium's application contains misleading information, Apothecarium must be disqualified. So I would presume that Embark would also agree that if there's no misleading information in their application, they can't be disqualified. And they've heard that there isn't any. They just don't like that answer. I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but it's just not borne out by the record. So the other final piece that I did want to mention is, you know, this hammering on, a site was required, a site was required, a site was required. If you go to the webpage, it's one of the first things that's written in there. A retail location is not required for the first step. So they can continue to assert that it was, but the city had already, as you've heard from the chief of police explaining to you, why wasn't that considered the most important factor? Why did the city not want to place so much emphasis on it? We didn't want to race to the lease. We didn't want to race to real estate. We wanted a quality, competitive-based merit review, competitive merit-based review, sorry, where we assessed the validity, the operational structure, the ownership structure, and ultimately they reached a very tight decision. The top six from that final force ranking all concluded on the same final two top applicants. Embark narrowly missed out. It's unfortunate. We don't always win. We apply many times for things before we ultimately get them sometimes, and that appears to be the case here. So this reply letter to me didn't introduce any new information outside of what I told you about this one person, one application. It's a violation for them to apply multiple times. They never raised that issue on appeal. They can't raise it today, and it's actually inaccurate because you can't hold multiple licenses, but you don't, there's no prescription on applying for multiple licenses. So with that being said, I don't think there's any more material to respond to in this last-minute reply brief that was submitted, but as part of the city attorney's office and staff, I'm sure we welcome any further clarification questions as you deliberate and consider.
Thank you for the clarification of that last-minute letter, and thank you for city council listening through that. With this calm, I'd like to open the discussion to deliberation and a motion.
No comment.
Okay, some comments from Kristen and then you, Ed?
We can start with that.
Oh, Ed, okay. Ed?
You know, I appreciate, I try to take all appeals seriously. We get very few of them, so it's important. We listen to 10 minutes of, or 12 minutes of an appeal, and then the counter rebuttal, and then five minutes additional. And in my mind, it seems like it comes down to four issues here. We're dealing about the addresses, the phases, the oral panel, and the words "may" and "shall." And in my mind, I'm pretty clear about what the difference is between the words "may" and "shall." We've had so many times it comes up before us to, you know, understand what one means, and I don't over-read into it. With regard to the address, it's real clear that the address was not required. It was, like, it was just demonstrated last one. Phases, it's my experience in interviews that it's very rare that you only have one phase of an interview. I mean, sometimes there's one phase that may just qualify you to move on to Phase Two, then Two may have points and may not. I asked a clarifying question in the beginning, that there was no points assigned to the analysis. It was used as a tool to whittle down a group of 14 to a reasonable panel that could be interviewed, and I think the city would not be doing its due diligence if they didn't have an interview. If they came back to me and said, "We looked at 14 applications, and here's who we recommend," I'd be disappointed. So I think that matters, and the timing of this is impeccable because all of us have spent all day sitting on interview panels, and we use the force analysis. And if you were to look at my notes, there's a bunch of scribbling on there, which you would not know what it meant. But it meant something to me because at the end of the interview, I was able to make, put a number down in that forced analysis. So taking all these into weight and trusting the reliability of the people that I know that served on that panel and the recommendations of HDL, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the appeal.
Second. Was that Peterson?
Yes.
There's been a motion and a second. Continue. Any more comments?
No, I have none.
I do have a comment.
Okay, you were next. Okay, and then Sam, after you.
One of the things that I would like to say about what's just taken place here tonight, I think is important for me to say because it really made me take pause, and that was that the gentleman that was up here mentioned that a law enforcement official called a person and they told him to do something. And what struck me very first and foremost is that law enforcement official is our chief of police, and he does a fine job here, and he at least deserves the respect of the title that he has earned. Secondarily, the person that he called for that advice is a company that was suggested by the appellant be a part of a proposed new application process. And so it seems clear to me that it is not who we spoke to that is upsetting, but it is that they did not provide the response that the appellant wanted to hear. There have been lots of large words to mention fraud, regardless of the fact that our city attorney has pointed out there's no proof of fraud. There have been attempts to call someone a bad actor, but that does not make them so. And I don't believe that this is an attempt to help us correct defects. And I do not believe that the information delivered at the last minute was done for our information. And by doing so at the last minute and suggesting that it was delivered electronically but with no means of saying how or when, seems to me a challenge to the city itself in being honest and open in their receipt of information. To be perfectly honest, the appeal that I heard tonight sounds conspiratorial, as though the city has some kind of conspiracy against one applicant who was not chosen. And it's frustrating, and I can understand the frustration of not being chosen, but I am disappointed to see that this is the outcome of what has clearly been a well-thought-out and considered application process. And that is why I seconded the motion to deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your arguments. I think I wanted to just state for the record that... I think I wanted to just state for the record that this is Capital's effort, a new initiative to begin cannabis retail. We take that very seriously. It has a big impact upon our community. We rely on our city manager, our city attorney, and our Chief of Police to work us through this process to keep the community safe. We initiated the ordinance and it by nature cannot expound on every possible issue or questions that may come up during the course of this application process. And, and that's why it is stated in a permissive manner and uses the word "may," which I think reasonable people would agree, would mean that additional items could be included during the course of this application process. And that is actually consistent with the ordinance and built into the ordinance itself because, and I want to refer to subsection 12 of, um, of 5.36.030, which adds, "In addition to any regulations adopted by the city council, the city manager, chief of police, um, or his or her designee is authorized to establish any additional rules, regulations, and standards governing the issue of denial or renewal of a retail cannabis license." So that believed that staff and the Chief of Police did act in accordance with our municipal code and that the process was ultimately fair and objective. Concerning the issue of the interviews, um, to me that subsection 12 authorizes the city chief to establish that additional procedure. And frankly, I, as Ed mentioned, I don't know how we would, um, issue such a significant, licenses of such significant significance to our community without looking people in the face and being able to talk to them. You don't do that from paper. And so to me, that was a necessary and reasonable process. And it was ultimately fair because all the finalists, including the appellant, were notified in advance of the interview. They were given the opportunity to ask what the criteria would be used. They were all that asked, were given it. And this particular, um, appellant did ask and was given that information. I don't think that they have standing to argue for maybe the other finalists that did not ask. And I also understand that at the time that the interview took place, that Embark did not object to the process. Because if they had prevailed and won, I'm sure they would have been fine with it. On the issue of Mr. Sweet, um, I don't believe the appellant has met the burden of showing how his participation was fraudulent upon the city or upon the application. It may certainly have breached certain exclusivity agreements that Embark had with him, but that's between Mr. Embark and Mr. Sweet. I don't think that the burden should be shifted to the city, um, that, um, that that, um, dual role was being played by Mr. Sweet. And I'm not quite clear on why that would be prohibitive. The applicants are the LLCs. They're not the particular member managers of the LLCs. And I don't know if even Mr. Sweet was a member manager. There was no evidence presented on that question. And as a matter of fact, it sounds like he was fully disclosive of his dual role. And the city is now, the, being shifted that we had a duty to disclose that to Embark. On the information about the site, um, as it was brought out, um, both on the website, it says that no site plan is necessary at this stage. On the application, it states that no site plan is necessary. And we've heard the evidence saying that actually there was no misleading information presented at any of the interviews. And since the site plan is not necessary for that stage of the application process, if, at, you know, at the most, it was just harmless error. Um, if there was any error at all that occurred in that situation, because it wasn't a relevant factor. And I just wanted to set for the record, those are my reasons why I'm going to support the motion.
Just for the record, that, um, Capitol does often, from my experience and my 12 years of being on this bench, one way or the other, follow a similar process of winnowing down the, um, large field of applicants in many cases and trying to come up with a representative sample of what we think are the best. Embark was part of that group. And then we go to a final, more detailed or more involved process. And, um, just as Ed said, we did that recently, um, in another hire, and there's many other hiring processes I haven't been involved with, but, um, this recent one, we spent quite a bit of time trying to narrow down a wad, excuse me, a wide, um, application pool to those we thought, uh, would be reasonable for us to consider. And then we focused on those that we felt were very reasonable applicants and ones we would like to have potentially, um, working for the city of Capitola. This is not an uncommon practice. It's one that's well-accepted on private and in public, uses of public and private time to try to figure out who is the best. And I think we did that. I think the process was a good one. Terms of, um, not answering questions that are given to applicants and being evasive or indicating that in some way or another they're going to evade that question is concerning to me. And I, I can see why that, um, was a problem for the panelists and definitely affected the outcome of the final phase. So those are two reasons that I'd like to, um, put out there why I'm going to vote for Um, sir, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
And it is a motion to uphold the staff, staff recommendation.
Correct.
Councilmember's story.
And to deny the appeal?
Yes.
That's why, uh, aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Batorf.
Aye.
Mayor Bertrand.
Aye. So it passes.
Unanimously.
We're going to take a brief break here.
Not about winning that, it's not about winning. Um, (inaudible). I know, I'm a little bummed, I guess. I know, right? E O S S, huh?
Okay, I'd like to call us back into session. Call us back into session. So we're on to item E. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we take the called consent item this evening, at this point.
Eight F.
Yeah, eight F.
Oh, right. I'm sorry, Nikki. Yeah, again, and Larry, yes. Okay, so, um, could you remind me, it's in section E, um, item E?
It's item...
E?
Eight, eight F. F.
F.
We have a brief staff report prepared for it.
Yeah. Okay, item F, that's right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just want to give a quick, uh, overview of what the leader and coordinator positions for the after-school program came, how it came about. Um, the leader and coordinator positions are, were structured 5% above both the camp Capitola leaders and, uh, coordinators. The proposed leader starts at $14.59 an hour. Currently, the minimum wage in California is $12 an hour. It'll go up on the first of, uh, January to, uh, $13 an hour, and by 2022, January 1st, it'll be at $15 an hour. Every year, we do do adjustments to include those, um, changes to minimum wage, but we also include, um, changes to the other positions to make sure there's not compaction. So if we, we have, we raise the, the entry level position by a dollar, we also go out with the other positions to make sure that they're not too close. So that's kind of, I just want to give you kind of the background on how we handle the part-time seasonal positions.
So with that clarification, do you have any more questions, Ed?
So we currently are within state guidelines with our, with our salaries?
Oh, uh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I would just like to add some points of reference of where this came from, so I can give, if this is appropriate time.
Yeah, go for it.
Um, so we are in pilot mode for this after-school program. And as I've seen in ISO on the Childcare Planning Council, I've received numerous reports on providing quality education and sustainability is so important for students. And one of the things we need to do is always think about it at the ground level of how much we pay staff. It's a huge issue. A new report will actually be released next week about the, um, insufficient pay scale on how we pay folks. Be it this is a new program and a pilot program, I think it's important that we create the foundation correctly from the get-go, not to revisit it in 2020 when we finally get there because the state has realized, you know, minimum wage should be $15 an hour. I think this is a great opportunity for us to set the bar where it should be from, at the forefront. By doing so, I really do believe that we will get quality staff hired and staff who will stick around. And, and that's really important when we, when we work with, with kiddos, is that we, that they have somebody there every day, that they are there and familiar with them, not a big turnaround on, like, a seasonal person where these part-time seasonal positions where we see on the beach, they're part-time, they're student workers or they're high school students who come and go. This after-school leader and coordinator will be in these kids' lives for multiple years, all day, Monday through Friday, several hours a day. So I think that's the big difference when we're looking at this pay scale. On top of it, since we already know that in 2020 it's going to happen, my whole point is why not do it now? It's a 40 cents difference to start out, it's not huge, but it's, go ahead, do you want to say something? Um, that, I recognize that in January, it'll change a little bit, but again, it's starting now at 15, and then sure, in January, they get another bump or whatever. But I, I really just want to advocate for the people who are not even hired yet, so that we create a program that is, is well-rounded, sustainable, that is identifying and recognizing all the issues we see in all sorts of other programs, preschool programs, after-school programs. This is really setting the bar. And since we're breaking ground already with one of the very new after-school pilot programs in the state, we should do it right.
I'm confused here because I thought you said that it's $13 in '20, $14 in '21, and $15 in '22. Is that what the state's mandating? Did I?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so they're not going to give, give $15 an hour until '22, and we're right now at $14, $15. We're going to go to, this, by 2022, we're going to be above what the state's going to be mandated. Am I reading that right?
So, so, let me try to frame the context here. So this is our hourly schedule. So you'll see the bottom of the hourly schedule for these hourly employees is the junior guard, the assistant junior guard instructors. So that's the one that over time, next year, for example, when minimum wage goes up to $13 an hour, that'll have to go up. And when that one position that I've highlighted there goes up, there's this cascading domino effect and all the other positions move up along with it. So, and we do that every year as the minimum wage has been stepping up. And so I think Councilwoman Brooks is suggesting, "Let's start this one at 15," because we know that that's where the minimum wage is going to ultimately be. And rather than setting it $14.59 today, set it, start it at 15 today.
I, I, well, that, not a question, are we in the discussion or are we, I had questions, I was just wanting clarification.
Scheme to this, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I see the point. I, and I don't know how I was to finagle the fact that, that we should be paying after-school leaders from the get-go what a minimum wage starting salary would be in 2020. We should start it now since the...
We're not in the discussion. I, I was asking a question, and I don't know if we're going to go through the process and ask the public and then come back and have a discussion. I'd rather go through that process and if somebody else has a question.
No more questions? Okay. Um, there's no one from the public here to comment, but I'll give that opportunity. Okay, seeing none. Um, I would like to ask Nikki if you would come forward and give us an idea of what you feel, uh, the after-school leader would be doing and, and your, um, concept of what an appropriate wage is to start. And I also know there's some steps here. So, um, the zero step is that sort of like an inexperienced person, you want to get them on board, you want to train them, and then you jump them up to the next step after they've qualified and now they're at 15. So just give me an idea of how you would imagine dealing with this new staff person.
Okay. Um, so, first of all, the, I, when we were talking about deciding on the salary of these individuals, I, I did intentionally want the salary to be higher than the summer seasonal workers in order to address that exact issue, that they are having a much more longer-term contact with the youth and to have that stability, um, I agree, is very important in the, in these kind of staff because they provide that out-of-school time impact in a pretty positive way. And then with the, starting at zero, so if a staff member that has that... And then with the starting at zero, so if a staff member that has that, the interview well, and they are able to, I mean, that they have like all of the basics, right? So that they would start at zero, and then the city practice policy is that after a six-month probationary period, they would be considered for an additional step increase based on, am I quoting that right? Based on their performance in that probationary period. So after six months, it's already built in that they would potentially be moving up a step. Additionally, in this structure, the six months would be hitting about the same time that the minimum wage would be increasing, and the automatic increase that is built in would happen at that same time.
This is built into the system, and this step is at your discretion, being the manager?
That's true, yeah. If there was an individual that, for example, came in and they had a master's degree, but they were really passionate about after-school programs, and that's kind of what they wanted to do, then I would consider perhaps a higher step because of their higher level of experience.
Okay. So you're recognizing Yvette's comments that we want qualified staff, and you're telling me that you want to have them paid accordingly to their qualifications, and if they're new or young and have no experience, you start them off and then do the evaluatory, evaluation period. Okay, any other questions of Nikki, the director? Does this sort of go in the direction you're thinking?
It actually makes more sense to me now, seeing that after six months, they would be receiving actually even more than the minimum wage that would take effect in 2020, and granted, the pilot program will be happening in the 1920 fiscal year. It all makes perfect sense. With that, if anyone else was entertained, as excited as I am to offer more money for these folks and continue on, I mean, we can still call the vote, but I appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Nikki, you've thought through this, and I do. It's well-structured, from my perspective at this point. Any other questions of Nikki? And thank you for bringing that question up. I appreciate it. It got us focused on something that's important. And the reason why it's important is she wants this program to be successful, and I know she's worked with you on this, so I think it was a well-placed question.
Thank you.
So, is there a motion?
I have a comment.
Oh, sorry. Ed?
You know, here's the thing, you know, I think it's a great program, I supported this program, it came online. When it comes to arbitrarily giving someone an increase, that puts me at a disposition because I value every one of our employees, everybody that does anything, and to do something that goes out of a sink for a reason, I can't justify that. I have a problem with that. So that's the reason why I hesitated on this. I think this is fair, I think it's great, it's going to correct itself, but I don't want anybody else to feel like we just all of a sudden pick on somebody and say they're entitled to a bonus for some reason. So I'm happy with, make a motion to adopt the schedule as is.
Second. Second, okay. I'll make one last comment. The reason why I asked Nikki to talk was because I did not think this was arbitrary. I wanted to know what the rationale was behind it, and I've noticed that in her planning, and so I wanted to hear her voice on that. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it passes. Thank you. So let's go on to item E, public banking legislation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is on the agenda, the request of councilmember Story. It's to, councilmember Story asked for a briefing about public banking options that were being considered in the state legislature. I did a bit of research, and there's two bills that are out there right now, Assembly Bill 857 and Senate Bill 528. And the item today would be to consider sending a letter of support to the bill's authors and our legislative delegation in support of either one of these pieces of legislation. Just very quickly, a bit about public banking. Public banking is essentially exactly what it sounds like. It is an institution that functions like a private bank but is a public entity. A common example that's cited by advocates of public banks is the Bank of North Dakota, which has been operating, I believe, for almost 100 years, maybe more than 100 years. And it's allowed the state of North Dakota to save money on banking fees that would otherwise be going to large financial institutions. And I think according to the Bank of North Dakota's most recent statements, they've returned more than $1 billion to the state, I guess, over the 100-year history. So it is substantial amounts of money that can add up. Now, the two bits of legislation that are out there, Assembly Bill 857, I believe you got a letter suggesting that we should support it. The city of Santa Cruz and the county has supported it, along with a few other jurisdictions around the state. I will be honest with you, I think Assembly Bill 857, it would empower cities to start their own public bank, or joint powers authorities, or partnerships between counties and cities. Usually, I'm all for more opportunities, more tools in the toolkit for cities. I'll be honest with you, though, it makes me a little bit nervous, just from my professional experience, that I don't know that we would really want to have a whole bunch of public banks, and I don't know that that necessarily falls in the wheelhouse of every city, and that every city would necessarily do it really well, and if they didn't, the backlash on cities that really weren't involved would probably be harsh. We've seen that before, when cities kind of fall off the bus. Sometimes the ensuing legislation constrains everyone else that was doing things well. Alternatively, Senate Bill 8528 seems to be pretty logical. It would empower the state's I-bank, which is an institution that we've worked with in the past, state agency that borrows a whole bunch of money at really low rates, and then will dole it out to cities for smaller loans. It would empower them to be a depository institution, so you could take your money and deposit it with them, and they could serve as your bank. So kind of replicating the Bank of North Dakota, but not letting every city set it up, sort of keeping the expertise housed maybe more within the state of California. That bill, that Senate bill, has been tabled, so it's not going to come up again this legislative session, but intuitively to me, I think that that, that may be ultimately a better potential direction. Alternatively, we could simply monitor this and provide other reports down the road if there's any changes in public banking legislation. So I think your options tonight are to direct the mayor, we would provide a letter for him, to either write a letter in support of either one of these bills. Alternatively, we could just continue to monitor this and provide updates as they're available. Thank you for your attention.
Any comments from city councilmembers? Comments?
Questions?
Questions. Sorry.
No questions.
Adelbrain. Okay, any questions of city staff on this? Okay, any questions or comments from public? Seeing none, bringing it back to city council for comments and motion?
Yeah, let me just try to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to send a letter in support of Assembly Bill 857 and Senate Bill 528. I think it's good for liquidity and making more funds available in the community for businesses and nonprofits, and also under the Senate bill for local governments. So I don't, and I don't think that necessarily means that we would do that. It may not be appropriate for the city of Capitola, but I think it overall helps the economy in our state, and for that reason, I would encourage us to, if nothing else, send a letter in support. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it carries. Thank you very much.
Hey, we put in a long day.
We did.
It's only been 12 hours. I was going to say 14.
Overtime or something?
No, overtime.
How about another meal?